All right, good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and begin. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Placer County, Tuesday, February 25th, and we will begin with a flag salute. Supervisor Gustafson, if you would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will begin with the consent agenda, and I'll have the clerk read the motion, please.
All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. The board will convene as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority for item 20A. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be moved for discussion.
Great, thank you. All right, I need to remove 17D and recuse myself on that since I am a board member of William Joseph University. I understand we're going to remove item...
Yes, Supervisor, we have item 13A, 1 and 2. We are going to, I'd like to pull, we're going to address those items on that item.
All right.
Which were them, sir?
They are 13A, number 1 and number 2 are the...
And I'd like to remove items 23 and A, both A and B for a couple of questions. Great, anyone else?
23A and B.
And then, is there anyone from the public who would like an item removed for discussion on the consent agenda? All right, then, we can go ahead and take a motion to adopt these items other than the items that were pulled. All right, motion by Holmes, second by Gustafson. Roll call, yes?
Why, yeah?
Yes.
Holmes, Bueller, Gustafson.
Aye.
Gore.
Yes. Great, thank you. What I would like to do, since we have a number of folks here, which I'm guessing we've got some public comment, I want to go ahead and bring public comment first, and then we'll go to the consent agenda items. If there are comments about any item on closed session agenda, I'd like to take those after any other public comments first. So with that, we'll start here in Auburn, and you have each three minutes, please, and please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, my name is Judy Eiseman, and good morning, Supervisors, Placer County staff, and all guests. My name is Judy Eiseman, I'm a North Auburn resident and member of Protect Rural Placer. This morning, I'm here to address the recent SDIR for Hidden Falls Regional Park Expansion Project and the purchase of the Twilight Ride property. Thank you to the county for providing two copies of the SDIR to Protect Rural Placer. Thank you very much for that. Thank you again to the county for notifying the 6,000 residents of North Auburn and rural Lincoln who will be impacted by this project, as opposed to only those who live within 300 feet of a project. In the notice of availability of a draft SEIR for public review for this proposal, for this proposed project, the public meeting is scheduled to be held on March 26 during the workday. All of us are aware that, like events held in the evening, in the Placer Commission, the Planning Commission chambers were overflowing with attendees in a standing-room-only capacity due to the significant impacts of the proposed project, while day events are usually sparsely attended. Since most individuals do not have the luxury of a flexible work schedule, Protect Rural Placer is requesting a second public meeting to be held after 5:00 PM on that date or another. The purpose of this request is that, so that Placer County residents can provide, or provided the opportunity to address the Planning Commission while not being forced to miss work in order to attend a public forum which is specifically designed to capture their comments. While Andy Fisher Parks Administrator has responded to my inquiry, the Planning Commission holds their regular meetings on Thursday mornings and has not made it a practice of moving their meetings to the evening for past projects, and we will explore some options on how we may be able to offer additional opportunity to provide comments at a meeting. It wasn't a practice to notify residents who lived more than 300 feet from a project, however, 6,000 residents were notified. So let's stop saying, "This is the way it's always done", and start to ask, "How can we continue to improve our service to the community?" I also want to address the recent purchase of the Twilight Ride property blindsided. That's how I and many others feel. Although it may not be the county's responsibility to notify us of the purchase, the controversial nature of this purchase and its implications have painted our Board of Supervisors in a negative light. This is another case of, "This is the way we have always done it." I'm requesting that the county provide me with a copy of the final purchase agreement or a link to the document to share with Protect Rural Placer by the end of this week. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, my name is Jane Wurst, and I am part of Protect Rural Placer. I would like to read critical success factor number one from the county's strategic plan. Strategic relationships and community engagement. The county identifies opportunities to work collaboratively with our community members, business sector, municipalities, and regional partners on areas of common interest, supports efforts that will improve transparency of service delivery, and encourage open dialogue and two-way communication for the benefit of all county residents. The proposed Hidden Falls Expansion Project has been the opposite of that. We learned that the county supervisors and Parks Division staff had been planning the expansion since 2007, but the residents in the vicinity of the project were never informed until the notice of preparation in May 2018, and by then, it was a full-blown project. There was no transparency, communication, or collaboration with the residents. Just two days ago, we learned that the county had closed escrow on the Twilight Ride property. In the purchase agreement, sale agreement for that property, Article 1.02 states, "The purpose of acquiring the property, the property being considered to support expansion of Hidden Falls Park for the purpose of phasing an intermediate trail access point for the proposed project." That's it. I won't elaborate on how upset and betrayed we all feel, because you are all, you all received my email and questions yesterday. Once again, the county has demonstrated a lack of regard for the residents and a lack of transparency. Cindy responded within a few hours, thank you Cindy, and stated that she was, and I quote, "Working with staff on a statement I can send to you about this." I have come to regard Cindy with high esteem and respect over the last 10 months. And so Cindy, I hope that you didn't write that statement that you emailed back to me, because it was patronizing and leaves many of our questions unanswered. And to be honest, it just didn't ring true, especially given that the only stated purpose for the Twilight Ride property in the purchase agreement, the NOP, the scoping meeting, and the 2,000-page SEIR is for a trailhead and parking lot. Do all of you really want to preserve and protect the quality of life we love here in Placer County? Then please respect your constituents. Mean what you say, and then demonstrate that. Because if you don't, these words are just words on paper, wasted paper, wasted staff hours, wasted tax dollars, which are our hard-earned dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Marilyn Jasper, Public Interest Coalition. First, we appreciated the supervisory candidate forum last week. Three of you were there. It was informative and helpful. Second, there was some misinformation at that forum regarding the Winery-Brewery Zoning Text Amendment that needs to be corrected. A forum question was read along these lines: "If elected, how would you deal with noise impacts due to unlimited events, weddings, restaurants, and bars in rural residential areas when they are currently not allowed?" One supervisor's response was, quote, "First of all, it's not going to be unlimited. There will be all kinds of limitations on when they can have the events," unquote. Another supervisor followed and concurred with the previous one's response with, quote, "The premise is correct. The events are not unlimited." However, the initial study, the draft EIR, and the final EIR repeatedly state that unlimited events will be allowed as agricultural promotional events, and, kind of under the radar, private events may also be unlimited. Think of private Facebook and other social media groups with thousands of members. One of my own organization has listsers, private, 20,000 members. Allowing any type of unlimited events creates loopholes and unenforceable abuses. Last, it's understandable, if you haven't read the more than 2,000 pages of wine beer documents, but if you, our elected representatives, don't know what's being proposed in that ZTA, it's disturbing because it suggests you may have had no role in introducing or forming its conditions. Proposed amendments that gravely impact rural residents, such as this ZTA, need to originate from you, our elected reps, and not from special interests. I can assure you, rural residents who will be on the receiving end of unwelcome, unlimited commercial event noise traffic and other impacts certainly had no early input with this ZTA either. I have a handout for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Come on up, folks, and if you've got, somebody saved, we've got seats up in the front as well.
Hi, my name is Nancy Jo Rixey, and I think it's perfect, fine, following Marilyn. While you're deliberating on the appeal of the ATC shot screen, remember the screen is not the real issue. By approving the removal of the top portion of the shot screen, you are only removing the ISO. By allowing ATC to adjust it, you are allowing the real problem to drag out even longer. The real problem is the debilitating decimal level and reverberation that's occurring at ATC by the excessive use of the trap club beyond their stork use, and the county not looking into the possible violation at ATC's, of ATC's use permit. Recently, when visiting ATC, they told me that they are a 501(c)(7). That's a social club. A social club's are exempt for federal income tax if they are organized for pleasure, recreation, and other nonprofit, profit purposes. The key here is non-profitable. These clubs are run for the benefit of their members and not to pursue a profit. I know that there are a lot of people in the Auburn area that are social members of ATC and community influencers, attorneys, Rotary, and Lion members, sheriffs, county workers, and other organizations. This doesn't mean that the social club can bend the rules to meet their needs and jeopardize my health and degrade the quality of my life. Recently, ATC eliminated shooting on Wednesdays and Fridays, which I am in relief of. I'm not sure who has organized this change. County staff, I doubt. Mr. Carlson, probably, which the county has allowed him to do in addressing the real issue at ATC, which is coming up on three years. I can tell you, these changes haven't decreased the amount of hours of usage at ATC, or the intensity. The student clubs now shoot Monday and Tuesday from 3:00 to 8:30, which used to be 4:00 to 7:00. And now, on historic days, they're allowing the kids to do what is called "free shoot," increasing the decimal level and intensity on these historic days. If you don't know the difference, let me give you some examples you might be able to relate to. A driving range, batting bucks, how about tennis practice against a wall, but the decimal level is louder. It's a bang, 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 bang for five hours straight. That's what it sounds like when the kids are shooting. I know you've heard that there are no other places for the school to practice, but there are, and they're set up for teams to practice and are commercially run, not social clubs. Hanktown Range, Coon Creek, Lion Rifle Club, Sacramento Valley Shooting Center, Dillman Range, Sacramento Gun Club, Twin Cities Gun Club, JPA Ranch, Capital City Gun Club. I'm not against the trap club. They are part of the culture here in Auburn. I'm against the abusive, excessive use of their facilities for their own profit and not thinking of the community that surrounds them. I've been attending the Winery-Brewery Ordnance Meetings, and at this point, I wish there was a winery or brewery, brewery at the ATC. It's at least now the county is looking out for me and protecting my rights. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Honorable Board Supervisors and Madam Chair. My name is Andre Chapman. I'm the founder and CEO of Unity Care. For nearly 27 years, Unity Care has served thousands of children, youth, and young adults throughout Northern California in the foster care system. And for the past 12 years, we've had the privilege of providing IOP right here in Placer County. Nearly seven years ago, I stood before three of you, three of the five of you, in August and April of 2013, seeking your support to overturn a decision by HHS, who unilaterally at that point canceled our IOP contract three months into a new contract period because the department wanted to bring IOP services in-house administered through PCOE. You saw the injustice in this decision as it was not the best interest of the foster youth, it was not based upon contract performance, not based upon contract outcomes, quality of services, and the voices of those youth that were impacted. It was merely a fiscal decision to strengthen PCOE. Unfortunately, today, we find ourselves back in a similar situation, asking for your support, as the department has made a decision once again, not in the best interest of the young folks, not in the best interest of the people that we serve, not based upon contract performance, contract outcomes, quality of services, and again, the voices of the foster youth that we serve, but an arbitrary decision to not bring forward to the Board of Supervisors our winning RFP back in May of 2019. The department released an IOP, RFP, on February 8, 2019. We submitted our proposal, we sat for the interview panel, and we were notified that we won the RFP process on April 8, 2019. On April 19, our director accepted a job with another agency, and we installed an interim director prior to her leaving. Shockingly, on June 7, we received an email from the county rescinding our winning IOP based upon the departure of our director. I was asked to sign a six-month extension so the department could re-release a new RFP, as well as allow time for our team and the county team to meet each month to strengthen our partnership. I did question the unusual actions by the county, as this had been the first time in my 26 years, and the county would rescind an RFP process based upon a decision that the staff had left. I received a full commitment and confidence that Unity Care doubled down in our efforts, and we invested heavily in the program, further demonstrating our excellent outcomes. We hired a phenomenal program director, who had 20 years of experience, recently coming from Eldorado County. We expanded our services, we opened up housing, and we doubled down. In September of 2019, the department released the new IOP-RFP, and at the Bidders' Conference, the question came up as to why was the RFP being rebid. The department answered, "There was not enough competition." This was very different from what we had told, we were told, and a confirmation that something was not adding up. However, we applied. We sat for the interview panel, and we also, during that time, were given a second contract extension. On January 3, 2020, not to our surprise, we were notified that we were not selected. The agency had been providing IOP services since 2008, was not selected. We then had five days to write a formal appeal. Unfortunately, we had received no information on the ranking or the scoring, therefore giving us the information of why, why would we appeal. We were notified that our appeal was denied. A second extension expires on March 30, in less than 30 days. We have been asked now to sign a third extension expiring on June 30. That means that we are now operated under one year of extensions. The trauma and stress of this process has caused my staff, and now the young folks, overwhelming stress. The entire process has been riddled in the lack of transparency and questionable motives that remains, reminds us of what had happened nearly seven years ago. I'm asking you, as the department leadership, as the Board of Supervisors, as we understand this decision is now sitting with you, that you will give our young folks a chance to voice themselves. The only time we should make a decision on changing providers is when it's an issue around contract performance, quality of services, and/or the provider is just not performing to meet the contract standards. That is not the case here. This is simply a decision to strengthen the Department of PCOE and take these services in-house versus keeping them in the community where we are providing the services to other young folks and have been doing that for the past 12 years. I want to thank our young folks that are here to speak, and I will allow them to come up and share and express their voice and concerns.
Thank you. Any of you who would like to come up and speak? Don't worry, don't bite.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Raul Jesus Ortiz, and I live in Roseville. Growing up, growing up and attending first through 12th grade in the Newcastle-Loomis area, I was accustomed to not seeing other friends, peers, and professionals who looked like me. Ninety-five percent of my family's social workers and programs we have been involved with gave me the same experience. I know I speak for, for more than just myself when I say that the IOP coordinators, provided with Unity Care, has given us a sense of stability when that's what most of us are missing at home. I know I can turn to my coordinator and hint at a reference in English or Spanish, and for once, I can be comfortable with someone who is genuinely there to help. I am involved with NorCal MHA Speakers Bureau, and that would have not been possible if I had not received the support from my IOP family. Everyone brings a different asset to the table, and that is why it's crucial we continue with Unity Care. We can't come in and shake all of our lives up with a big change like that. When I thought about getting my construction license, IOP did a lot of research and brought me every piece of information I needed and offered to help me with all of it. Adulting isn't always easy when the adults around you are not the best example, but for us, that's all we know. Our IOP coordinators come and meet with us based on our date, time, and place of choice. See, life is crazy, and it's easy to lose sight of ourselves, but our coordinators are always there to seek a short-term and long-term goal set by us for us. If we didn't have that motivation and truly believed in this contract remaining, we wouldn't be here, but we are here, and I'm here. Self-worth is something we all lack sometimes, but deep down, we know our voice matters. That's why we are here, because even though we are scared or too shy, deep down, we know how important and how deep our coordinators have touched our lives in time of need and support. Everybody here in this room, one way or another, has a support team. I'm standing here letting you know, our IOP coordinators right now through Unity Care are our best support system in place. Regardless of our situation, they don't judge us for our past. They, they just want to help us achieve our future with nothing in return. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for having us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Trinity Zeeley, and I'm in the IOP program. I would like to speak for IOP because they are going to lose their jobs for no reason. I would like to have Bria, Javier, Nicole, and Eric stand up, please. These are important people to me. They're, they're family to me, because I grew up in a foster home since I was at age 11, and I can't stand hearing how this program is getting messed up. I don't feel like you guys did this right, and I want it to be fixed immediately. It's coming from the heart, and that's why I didn't have to write anything, because I care about them. You know, I'm not only losing IOP, I'm losing my IOP family. But if you could just give some time to help them get their jobs back, it would be amazing to me. I would appreciate it. Like, I'm shaking right now because of how deeply it hit me when I heard about this. I'm very emotional, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
But these people that are standing right now are, like, amazing. I went through the work program with Unity Care, and, and it was so amazing that I finally got my first interview since I've been in the Unity Per, Unity Care program, and they're going to get back to me this week. I've been appreciative of, of these people since I've been in the program, and I've been in there for like about three years, and I don't want them to lose their jobs because they're so sweet, and they're caring, and they're loyal, and I care so much about them. Please keep them, keep their jobs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you for coming to share.
Good morning. My name is Cristobal Garcia. I also didn't write a speech, but I'm just here to speak of how I feel. And ever since I was 12 to the age I was 17, I've been homeless. And to be honest, I didn't think I had a future for me. I was going to move to Madera, where my mom lived, and just work in the fields, you know. As a Mexican, that's kind of all I've known, you know. Moving in here is, and working with these people, this great group of people that have showed us support and unconditional love, if you, if you say. I've grown a lot. I've, I've learned a lot. Just this, just this last few weeks, I got my employment authorization card, which is one of my greatest accomplishments. I have safety in not getting deported, which is a big thing for me, because my brother, when I was, when he was 16, he got deported. And I always told myself I didn't want to be like him, but with the way things were, you know, I didn't see myself going a different path than the way he went. And entering IOP and Coineania, it's opened me up to so many opportunities, from being able to work, to going to college, to opening a bank account, which I didn't even like the thought of, and now I'm doing great stuff for myself. I have a bunch of skills that I'm trying to learn, and, and socially, too, you know, I'm not one for public speaking, but I just ask you guys to reconsider and make the right choice, because it's not only affecting me, it's affecting everyone sitting behind me. And, I mean, we're just, yeah, like, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Good morning.
I'm Bianca Sanchez-Carpal Hall, and I've been with IOP for a year and a half. And I've been in foster for the last three years, and they have been with me to help me get my schooling done and help me look for a college after I graduate, and help me get my driving s- thing started, and help me imagine my money, and they took the time to help me with all of that. And for, I'm grateful for that, and I know that there are other kids that deserve that, and I don't have, who don't have the family support, and, yeah, oh crap, I'm scared.
You did fine. Thank you for sharing.
Sorry. My name is Alejandra. I'm 19. I live in Rockland. I didn't write anything either, so everything I'm saying is coming from my heart and my head, you know. I've been with Unity Care for about a year and a half, and I've been in the foster system, and I've had case managers, social workers, probably since I was nine, and I can honestly say this is the first time that I can tell that my social workers and my case managers actually care, and they take the time, their own personal time, and when they say that any time of day, any time of night you need them, they really mean it. You know, if you, they, they get off at a certain time, and I've texted them, and I've asked them for help after that, and I get a reply, or right in the morning, it's like the first thing that, you know, they want to make sure we're good. And...
Javi and Amy and Heather, can you stand up?
These three people right here have been my main support system for the year and a half that I've been in Unity Care, and my IOP worker is Javier, and he's helped me with almost everything that I've accomplished, like, right now. I currently started college, and I wasn't really motivated to, because where I'm come from, where I come from, we, like, that's not really what we do. I, I don't think college is something we think of, and they motivated me to go to... I don't think college is something we think of, and they motivated me to go to college. They helped me get my driver's license, you know? They helped me manage, save money. I have money in my account right now because of them. And I just think that with them not being with us anymore is not going to only affect the people in this room, but other people that weren't able to make it today. And, yeah, so I just feel like IOP means a lot, and like people said already, IOP for me is my family here because I have no, I have no family in Sacramento and Placer. My family is two to three hours away from me, and this is my biggest support system that I've ever had, you know? So they help us do a lot. They help us accomplish a lot, and I would be really disappointed and be really sad because a lot of kids wouldn't get that opportunity, and they wouldn't get to feel what it feels like to have that family if they don't have family, or it's how it feels to accomplish something like going to college and getting their job and getting their driver's license. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, my name is Brighton Fowler. I am currently 19 years old, but I remember back when I was a freshman, I was turning 16. My aunt had died, okay, and it was a rough time, honestly, it was. My nana didn't know what to do because she wanted me to start paying for my own phone, and the stuff just got even worse, you know? And then my nana assigned me up for the IOP, and they helped me with all kinds of things. They helped me get a job. They helped me be able to pay for my own phone. I actually now work at McDonald's, and I am actually on track to be a manager and be a closer, and be a closer, too. Now, with that said, I also, they also helped me get my California State ID. They helped me get my driver's license. They even helped me get a car, and that car is a Ford Mustang convertible, which I am very, very happy about, by the way. And even when times were at the worst, they were always there for me. Like, I've had a, I've had a rough couple of years, you know? You know, Aunt died of cancer. My grandma got cancer. I didn't really live in a best house, you know? I was always verbally abused, and my grades weren't so well. People at school always bullied me, you know? They always made fun of me, but no matter what, the IOP was there. They helped me through it all. They basically, they were like a second family to me. And, you know, with that said, I was also a hermit, right? And they did all these activities to get, to get us to know each other, and I always went to them, so now I'd be, so now I've become more of a social person for that reason. And the IOP has helped me dramatically because of the fact that I started out as this kid who was scared and a hermit and who was, just couldn't do really much, but then when I, when I joined the IOP, they showed me that, what I'm really capable of. I was able to do a sport in sophomore year. It was a swim team. I did three sports, actually, throughout high school. I did football, wrestling, and swim. Now, at the same time, I was keeping my grades up, and even the beginning of my senior year, I was working 40 hours a week because I'm 18, and I also had straight A's in high school. And the IOP, I feel like, got me there because of the fact that they got me that job, and without that job, I would not have been able to keep my grades, keep my grades up. So I feel like we should keep the IOP because of the fact that it affects everybody here. Later, we had Trinity crying, you know? Also, that's another thing. I met Trinity through the IOP. She's one of my closest friends now. And then Javier, you all know him. He got brought up a lot. I was actually thinking about joining the military, too. So they did all kinds of research on the Marines, the Navy, and they helped me out a lot with it. And I figured, you know, I want to do the construction or I want to do the Army, so the IOP has helped me with all that. Anyway, thank you for your guys' time.
All right, yeah, we'll let them finish.
Hi, my name is Violet Ward, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Unity Care. I speak not only as, oh, and I'm a resident of Sheridan. So I speak not only as a former client of Unity Care, I'm also a foster parent, and my 17-year-old is currently in their program. My 17-year-old is a little bit different. She's my sister. Our mom died four years ago, almost, and she's getting, she's finally home, and she's getting all these skills from these people. These are people that I trust. These are people that help me with financial aid. I'm also the first college graduate in my family, so without them, I wouldn't have that because I wouldn't know how to apply for financial aid. I never thought I would go to college. My first bank account, my first job, my first apartment, every single thing that your parents are supposed to teach you. My parent wasn't there. My sister's parent wasn't there, while now she's at a place where I can provide that. It's so much more helpful to have people that are adults in her community that understand what she's going through, that aren't me. I know that she can talk to these people. I know that she's getting what I believe would be the right advice. These are all things that she needs in her community. She doesn't have a community other than that. She also gets to meet all these people, all these youth, and have those social skills. She gets that, what she should have as a kid, and it's so beautiful to see her blossom. She's not somebody that talks to everybody. She's really quiet. I've seen her in a room with these kids. She blossoms up. I also love the changes that have happened recently with the new director. The old one, I had some issues with, I'm not going to lie, but it's been wonderful, and she gets all these experiences, and she gets to do normal kid things, but also learn life skills. It's so amazing. I wish you could see the impact that it's had on my life, her life, and all of these guys' lives. Thank you for your time.
Hi, good morning. My name is Shyla Hendricks, and I've been in foster care for about three and a half years. IOP has helped me in many different ways, including helping me go to college, helping me get my own apartment, helping me get my license. They helped me get my California ID. They helped me get my first job. They helped me get my second job. I just have a few things to say that I'm really thankful for Bree and Javier. They helped, they helped me graduate high school and focus on what I needed to focus because I didn't have those people in my life to look up to. From really, from being really young, my mom was an alcoholic, and my dad wasn't really in the picture, so I didn't have anybody to look up to, and CPS was put in my life about, probably my freshman year. I'm 18 years old now. Social workers would come in and out. I never really got to know anybody too good. Never, they never stuck around long enough to seem like they cared, but these people, they care. They've been in my life for about two years now, and my life would not be the same without them. And I just want to stand up here and hope that you guys see what's right, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. All right, anybody else about Unity Care? As you come, are you with Unity? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Pam Carter, and I'll just wrap it up for you. Behind me is just a small fraction of the youth that we serve. We have 104 youth in our program, and a lot of them wanted to come today, but they're in school, and we kind of insisted that they stay there. We have about 34 kids that are in high school, and so serving kids in high school is not something we do. We really do insist that they go to class. So our case managers meet the kids where they're at, which includes, our program's community-based. We meet them in the community. We meet them after hours. 34 of our kids have jobs, so we meet them after work, before work. We have kids that are in our housing program, and it's very important because we have 34 transitional-age youth in our housing program, and the IOP in our housing is very linked and it's supportive of each other. We have 24 kids that are in transition, which means they're looking for jobs, and we have 12 youth who are in college. So you've heard some of the success stories. So I had to make a compromise with some of those kids that were in school, and they, being very technological, they recorded their speeches, so I promised I would put them on a flash drive and deliver them all to you. And so I will be making some appointments with some of you. Some of you I've already come and spoke to, and I do appreciate the time that you've given to me. Some, I'll be making some appointments, and I'll put them on a flash drive so that you can listen to their speeches, too, because they do want their voices to be heard. So we thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to say thank you all for coming and sharing. It's not easy to get up in front of a group of adults, and especially, this is sort of an intimidating environment, but thank you for sharing and thank you for the hard work that you're doing to invest in your future, and thanks to your staff who's worked with you. Did you, so let's go ahead. We're going to move forward onto the rest of public comment. If there's anybody else who has items before public comment, or in addition, any other people here in Auburn? Okay, we'll close public comment here, and it does not look like we have anybody in Tahoe City for public comment, so we will close public comment, and we're going to move, actually, let's see. All right, so we're going, we've closed public comment, we're going to finish up items on the consent agenda, and so we are just going to start with pulling, let's see, 13A.
Supervisors, the item before you is, we really made some adjustments to the calendar. However, after just looking at some logistical items, item one and two on item 13A are not necessary at this point, so we will, I would recommend we do not move forward with those two items, but three, item three through six still is consistent with kind of adjustments to our calendar and our timeframes as well. So any questions about that? Otherwise, I would...
And just to clarify, I want to make sure it works for folks to have our board meeting on the regularly scheduled date of the 24th of March. We were looking to move it to the 17th, but due to schedules, as long as the 24th works for folks, still? Okay. Good. Just wanted to clarify. So with that... All right, motion by Holmes, second by...
I can't.
Why can't? All right. Halt those in favor. Aye? All right, and we, and Supervisor Euler was temporarily absent. Thank you. Next, we will move to, let's move to items 23A and B before I recuse myself. So come on up, items 23A and B.
Sure. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board of supervisors. These next two items, we're asking for approval of project specifications and authorizing the Director of Public Works or as a designee to advertise for bids. Project 23A is a resurfacing project, which comprises three basic components, which is, excuse me, micro-surfacing or slurry seal, a rubberized chip seal, and then a combination of those two products, which is called a rubberized cape seal. And the total project cost is approximately $3 million with various funding sources, including SB1 gas tax funding. So with that, 23A, I'll ask if you have any questions of me.
My questions were basically kind of tying, or later on our agenda, we'll be seeing a budget update, mid-year budget update, and so in that, we are receiving 7.4 million in the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, and then we have these two projects, which I totally support. I guess my question is, can we do more? And so when I look at the expenditures for those funds, we're using about $500,000 of gas tax for this one, 23A, and then 23B, we're using, forgetting the number right now?
About 2 million of that.
2 million. And so really, my question is, could we do more, and where's the rest of the gas tax money being expended? So I wasn't sure if I should pull these or if I should be looking at the budget update, but since the technical experts were here for these, I thought I'd ask here.
Okay, great, yeah. And when I mentioned the RMRA, the SB1 gas tax funding, that's what a lot of folks has referred to as the new gas tax, the one that went in place in April of 2017. And so the allocation, the estimated allocation for 18, 19, or 1920 was 7.4 million, and we divvy, we have to report to the state what, where those dollars go. And so some of it went for hiring contractors to do routine or special tree trimming around county roads. Some went for ADA concrete upgrades. Some went for culvert lining project. Some went for some overpass reconstruction, and the rest goes towards resurfacing. So subsequent to these two bids going out, when we get room, we receive the bids, and we can dial in our overlay project, and that will be another big expenditure. So I'll be back in front of your board, hopefully here in a couple months with that.
If I combine these two items, and I know you haven't explained the second one, but since I pulled it, we're resurfacing about 632 miles of roadways.
132, yes.
Right, 132, and we have over 1,000 miles of roadway, and many of our roads are in pretty poor condition. So it's one of the things I hear a lot about from our constituents, and I just want to, I look forward to that next phase of the project, of the resurfacing or the overlays, and about how many more miles will we be doing then?
Well, it's going to depend on bid prices. I'm hoping to get at least 10 more miles with that money. The, I'll say the bread and butter of our resurfacing program are these two, the micro-surfacing and the chip seal. Way back in the day, we used to do about 100 miles of chip seal a year. And, you know, if you just look at 1,000 miles of maintained road, we could get to every road in every 10 years. Well, with this influx of the RMRA funding, the new gas tax, it's going to get us back on that track, you know? If we can do 132 miles, 142, say 150 miles every year, then that gets us closer to, even, even better of a rotational cycle. Then you add in the CSA funds and other money that we can hold of, and then I think, you know, it's on the uptake. But a chip seal and a micro-surfacing project, and I've mentioned this before, it's kind of like changing the oil on your car. It keeps good roads in good condition. And the chip seal itself, which is the next, the next project 23B, we use that primarily on our rural roads, you know, because that, a lot of those roads were, are rural roads that were only ever dirt roads that are a series of chip seals over the years, and so it keeps them in good condition. And we, you know, as funding and infla, funding went down, inflation took over, we weren't able to do that in the early, mid 2000s.
Great. Well, I appreciate the efforts with the gas tax, and I know a lot of folks have wanted to see these, the uptick in our maintenance of these roads. Some of the roads I am very familiar with up in our area of Tahoe, and they, it's hard to imagine that you're going to be able to, to resurface those. I mean, they're crumbling right now. They're literally crumbling. So I look forward to seeing that happen, but they're long overdue, and I hope it works. But I just wanted to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep up with this road maintenance and continue to accelerate.
I think we are. The rubberized cape seal, which is, which is majority of the roads that are in the Tahoe project, that will, for lack of a better term, glue those roads back together in preparation for a future overlay. These types of surface treatments are about a tenth to an eighth of the cost of a full overlay, you know, so we're, especially with the rubberize, we're trying to stretch our resurfacing dollars as much as possible.
All right, any other questions from board members? I'll open up, just go ahead and open both of them up to the public, any comments from the public? We will close public comment, and how if I, how about if I have the clerk read motion 17C first, and then we'll take 17, or, yeah, 23.
23A.
You read it.
23A. Approve project specifications for the fiscal year 2019-20, surface treatment project, contract number 001245, estimated to cost $3... number 001245, estimated to cost $3 million, and authorize the Director of Public Works or does need to advertise for bids.
Motion by Gustafson, second by Holmes. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carries. And then the next item, Megan?
Approve project specifications for the fiscal year 2019-20, RMRA chip seal project, contract number 001246, estimated to cost $2 million, and authorize the Director of Public Works or does need to advertise for bids.
Motion by Gustafson, second by Holmes. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you, Chair Gore.
We will move to item 17D, and I'm going to recuse myself, so I will walk out the door and let Supervisor Wegant, or actually, I'm walking out.
Good morning, members of the board. Ladies and gentlemen, Greg McKenzie, your Placer County Conservation Program Administrator. We have this morning for your approval, a use of funds agreement with William Jessup, University's Institute for Biological Diversity and the Environment, in the amount of $18,000 to support the Raccoon Creek Chinook Salmon Distribution Immigration Pilot Study and Furtherance of Placer Legacy and Placer County Conservation Program objectives. These are actually grant matching funds that we have within our budget to support these sorts of studies and furtherance of the goals and objectives of programs we have existing. So I also have with me today two representatives who are fisheries biologists who can answer any questions that you might have from William Jessup's Institute for Biological Diversity and E-Cor Consulting.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions by board members?
Aye.
Anyone from the public have a question or comment? See, and then I'll bring her back to the board for action. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Thank you. Bonnie, you can come back now.
Yes. So let's go ahead and move to board member reports. Anything from board members? I believe Supervisor Gustafson had something.
Yeah, similar to the public comment we had received earlier, I had quite a few emails related to holding an evening or timeframe for the SDEIR on Hidden Falls Twilight Ride Property project. So I'd like to ask what our protocol is and see if we could hold an evening workshop to encourage public attendance.
Sure. Well, I think that anytime we have a very large issue that's of public interest, it makes sense to hold a meeting at a time that folks can attend. We're doing that with our workshops, budget workshops, this coming spring. So I think that, I think we've all received a lot of comments, and I wouldn't have a problem just having one hearing, but just moving it to the evening when people can attend. I don't know about you folks. I think that's a good idea. It allows the public to participate more so in something that's really important. So I think that's a good suggestion, and Todd, you can make sure we have that happen.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll put something on consent, changing up the date, probably. You want to do that?
We actually don't need to do that. What I suggest you do is, this is a suggestion to the SEEDRA to request that that planning commission agenda be shifted to allow for an evening meeting on the comments for the draft DIRR, and then that notice can be revised and sent out accordingly.
Okay, so if that works, great. Thank you. All right. Any other comments from board members? And Todd, any report from you?
No, I'm...
All right, terrific. Well, then we are going to finally move on to our 910 item, which is the Placer Creates 2020 Art Show. And who is speaking to that this morning?
Hi, good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, making sure all the people are where they need to be. So, Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you so much for allowing us to speak with you. My name is Wendy Brodnick with Human Resources, and I am here to talk to you about the 2020 Employee Art Show. So we're very excited about this program. One of the really neat things about this program is it really helps to support employee engagement, communication, collaboration with our employees together, but also with our community. And one of the really cool things is when you walk into our buildings, you'll see these amazing pieces of art. It's beautiful, it's interesting, and for some employees, this is the first time they've ever gotten to show their art publicly. So that's really cool. I would like to call out the members of the board of the planning committee. They include April Pei with our CEO Procurement, Crystal Bomback with HHS, Susie Lauderdale, CEO, Kristy Valech with HHS, Gina Geisler with HHS, Donna Hallman, Human Services, and then Victoria, I always say her name wrong, but Jango, I said it. Right, thank you, Diane. And you may have thought I missed Diane, but I did not. I purposely wanted to specially introduce her. Come on up, Diane. She is going to take you on a journey of the art show for this year.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you. Well, art is all around us. Art is very, is our creativity. It is an expression of ourselves, our loves, our workplace, our environment, our community. Art can be photography, knitting, crochet work, carving, painting, and it also can be found in food, which we call agroart. We're going to have a reception, and you can see our agroart at our reception. It is with also, done with all sorts of media, which is used by our artists within this art show, and I'm just going to mention a few. That's driftwood, paper, metal, stained glass, acrylic, watercolor, rocks, beeswax, and wool. So Placer Creates invites the board, the public, our employees, to our 10th art show. We've had three summer art shows at the Rockland office, and seven countywide art shows. These art shows, countywide art shows have been done at six different locations, at Tahoe, at the Tahoe City Library, Tahoe Administration Building, in Auburn, the domes here, the Community Resource Agency, Finance Administration Building, and then at our Rockland office on the first and second floor at the Sunset Building. Our 2020 countywide art show has over, has 31 artists and over 60 pieces of artwork. The show starts today and it ends May 29th. So let's, do we have Brayden here?
Brayden is here. Here is their picture. There you go.
All right. Hello, my name is Brayden Lockett. I'm a current Placer County Youth Commissioner, and also was on the board for the Coalition of Placer Youth, and I was at their youth retreat. We created this little art piece right here, and it's crazy because they're all little boxes, and these boxes, I'm going to set this down for a sec, are like this big, maybe. They're like crazy. And what's cool about it is I designed this box about this big, and it had a like blue and red stripe on it. I had no idea what I was creating when I made this piece. It turned out to be this like magnificent mural that like really showed what we were doing here at the retreat, like really created the sense of community. It was so amazing for me to witness, and then this retreat in general just like was so amazing, like really had an impact on my life. So I just loved the community that this created, and I thought it was such a fun experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brayden. Yes, absolutely.
All right, so around the county, you're going to see artwork. Here's just an assortment of some of those. Diane has a piece, which is the cats. You want to talk some more about the different pieces of art?
Sure, I'll go ahead and do that. So we have this watercolor piece, which I created. It was a memorial to my friend's cat here. This second piece, Melissa Spanx, created this bright and colorful paint, and it's actually a paint by numbers. Ted Reel created this very creative driftwood dog, which to me is completely amazing. Crystal Bomback, who is part of the Placer Creates Committee, she hung artwork and she curated all the pieces in the all six countywide locations. She created this beautiful stained glass. Brooke Williams, she has large pieces at the Sunset Building. I believe it's three pieces. They're very earthy, and they can be hung any which way, so it reminds me of a Rorschach test. So maybe we can do some psychoanalysis? A few guys?
No, thank you.
And then our piece right here is Jared Deck. He took this photo on Half Dome. It is, hiking up to Half Dome is quite scary on a normal day, so I have no idea how he got down. And he survived because we can see it.
Okay, thank you, Diane. So thank you so much for allowing us to share with you some of the wonderful works of art that are going to be all around the county. We would like to invite you and the artists, our employees, and the public to an opening reception that's going to be in the domes in Conference Room 1 right after this presentation. And in closing, the show is really about supporting creativity, collaboration, and creating a sense of community between our employees and the public that we serve. I want to thank the board for your continued support of the show, and I would like to thank publicly all the employees that spent their time, their energy, putting together these amazing works of art to make our buildings look so wonderful, and to make connections with our community, the Placer Arts Council, the Youth Commission, all those local community groups that pulled together and put together a wonderful show for you. So with that, I'd like to say thank you, and if you have any comments or questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Great, thank you. I just want to say, I'm looking forward to seeing the artwork. I admire people who are willing to, well, not only willing, but who can be creative, and then are willing to show it off to the rest of the world. So I look forward to seeing the artwork throughout the different buildings. So thank you for doing this. It's really terrific to see people's creativity.
Great, thank you, and enjoy the show.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item 2A, which is the Health and Human Services 2020 Census Outreach and Engagement.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Raoul Martinez. I'm with your Health and Human Services Department. I'm joined by my esteemed colleague in this effort, Nikki Strigan from UR Community Development Resource Agency. And we, along with Veronica Blake at Placer Community Foundation, serve as leads for Placer Counts. So it is a public-private partnership committed to ensuring a full and complete census. So thank you for making room in your agenda to talk about the importance of the 2020 Census. Today, we're also asking you to approve a resolution to encourage people living in Placer County to get themselves counted in the next census. And the census isn't some abstract exercise that we do every 10 years. It's real, and it has consequences. So I've got a couple of kids attending public schools in Roseville, and like other students, my kids aren't core classes like math, science, and English, and yet they're lucky enough to take music, foreign language classes, and after-school programs, which they love and which helps with their own development. And so I hope my kids actually continue to have these programs available to them. Frankly, I hope all kids attending public schools in Roseville and all kids in Placer County, no matter where they live, have access to enriching programs that lead to school and career success. The good news is that we can all help by filling out our 2020 census forms. So 2020 matters for schools. The census impacts the federal funds that our communities receive each year for programs and services that are critical for schools, students, and our youngest kids, particularly those ages zero to five. So that's why I will be filling out the census, Nikki will be doing the same, and working to encourage others to do so also. So a complete count affects other issues too, which we'll address momentarily. But first, let's review the basics. So what is it? So the census is designed to count every living person in the United States, so no small undertaking. The next official census day is April Fool's Day, April 1st, 2020. Yet you can actually start completing the forms in March, actually, the form in March. People will have through July to complete the form, although we are encouraging people to get it done and as close to April 1st as possible. And this will also be the first census to rely heavily on online responses. So while that creates opportunity for some, it's going to create some challenges for others. So that's the thumbnail sketch. So what's at stake is, it turns out, a lot. Census data determine how more than $675 billion are spent to support programs and services like fire protection, hospitals, schools, roads and highways. Census results are also used by small business to make decisions about potential employees and markets, and the census data is also used to reapportion the House of Representatives, determining how many seats each state gets. So think of it this way, when we shine a light on each person through the census, we have a better chance in Placer County to strengthen our neighborhoods with great schools, walkable space, and better health care. So what's the financial imperative? For every person missed, we will lose $10,000 per person between 2020 and 2030 in federal funding. So this information comes to us from the George Washington Institute of Public Policy, who published the authoritative report on the subject entitled Counting for Dollars 2020. So where is our focus? And our focus, we're in the business of creating a positive surround sound. So when we took a look under the hood, we actually found a handful of communities in Placer County most at risk of an undercount. So these communities possess indicators, and I'll talk about those indicators in a sec, which drive up hard-to-count scores. So if we think about, you know, neighborhoods that have many renters in them, communities with low broadband access, communities where there are many households with children under the age of five, and communities with people living in poverty, there are others as well. So these communities include, but aren't limited to, the ones that you see here on this, on the screen, so North Auburn, including the Greens, some of the downtown core neighborhoods in Roseville. In Rockland, there's a community, there's a pocket that's hugged on one side by Highway 65 and I-80 on the other, so if you drive through lots of apartment complexes in that particular area, and Kings Beach. There are also other communities as well. But if we just took, take a look at these communities, there are about 13,000 people living in these communities. So if 20% or about 2,600 go uncounted, Placer County will lose over $26 million in federal aid over the next 10 years until the next census. So I'm going to hand the baton over to Nikki. We'll talk about our local outreach effort and what it entails.
Thanks, Raoul.
So who is involved in that effort? A number of us have formed Placer Counts, which is a countywide coalition of community organizations, local government, and other interested parties committed to ensuring a full and complete count. As Raoul mentioned, we are in the business of creating a positive surround sound, educating and reaching out to communities who are likely to experience an undercount. And so we've got a lot of partners at the table. That includes Placer Community Foundation, Placer Collaborative Network.
That includes Plaster Community Foundation, Plaster Collaborative Network, the Community Development Resource Agency, Health and Human Services, First Five, Mary George from Plaster County Libraries has been involved. And we are expanding our effort and have expanded our efforts to include the sectors that you see here up on the screen. So, what are we doing? In order to encourage participation in hard-to-count communities, Plaster Counts has engaged in direct outreach, and that's through county contracts with companies who do phone banking and canvassing. And in particular, that has been in neighborhoods that are at a higher risk of an undercount. We have also decided to strategically cite questionnaire assistance centers. So, many of our libraries are questionnaire assistance centers, and those are located in areas that have historically undercounted community members. Plaster Community Foundation has also awarded many grants to a number of organizations in order to promote the census. And over the past couple of months, we have held trainings that has included organizations, service providers, a number of volunteers to learn more about how to promote the census. Plaster County and our partners have also committed to maintaining a website. That's plastercounts.org, where those who are interested in supporting the effort or learning more can go to get information and resources. They can access and share those resources. And it's a place where we can share positive and relatable stories about the census. The early returns on our outreach effort are pretty promising. So, as of February 9th, we have made direct contact with over 6,000 people. And again, that's through our phone banking and canvassing contracts. 90% of those individuals have responded that they intend to fill out their census form, which is great. This, of course, is just a subset of our outreach effort. There's a number of media and outreach that's happening at the federal, state, and local level, which we will continue to work on. What comes next? This is a little timeline of what has happened to date and where we are currently at. So, we're kind of currently full throttle with our community outreach and education phase. It's picking up a lot of steam now. That's going to carry on through the spring. And you'll see a lot more outreach messaging at the federal and state level, in particular, in mid-March. Come mid-March, everyone in this room is going to receive a postcard. And that postcard will invite you to fill out your census form. April 1st, as Raoul mentioned, is census day. It's the National Census Day. And then, those who don't complete their form in the month of April may be contacted by US Census personnel come the month of May. So, this is a brief promotional video that was produced by our public information staff. The video is narrated by Veronica Blake from Plaster Community Foundation, and it's also available in Spanish.
Help shape the future of Plaster County. Participate in the 2020 census. Did you know, for every person missed, communities in Plaster County will lose $10,000 per person in federal funding? We need your help to make sure that everyone gets counted in Plaster County. You can respond to the census by phone, by mail, or online. It's quick, easy, safe, and secure. Together, we can shape our future. Can we count on you?
Great. So, the link up on the screen, plastercounts.org/resources is where individuals or groups who are interested in supporting the outreach effort can go to find some resources. We encourage those interested in the outreach effort to visit this and share them freely. And before we conclude, I do want to give some thank yous to our collaborators. At the onset, we agreed with Plaster Community Foundation and First Five to align our funding resources in order to create maximum, a maximum amount of impact. We have invested in strategies that are very targeted. They're very evidence-based. And we're really lucky for that partnership. And so, I want to thank Veronica Blake, Janice LaRue, Mary George, Katie Combs-Pritchard, Joel Joyce, Michelle Hamel, Scott Sandow, Darren Hoopert, Cara Conklin, Annabelle Cordoba Sosa. He's the Executive Director for Sierra Community House in the North Tahoe Region. Dennis DeSalle, Jasmine Bro, Emilio Vaca, and all of our funded partners and volunteers who are probably doing outreach right now as we present here, and many, many others. So, I'll conclude here and direct you to the staff report. Raoul had mentioned the action requested of you today is to adopt a resolution encouraging all Plaster County residents to actively participate in the 2020 census. And we, of course, are available for questions. Great, thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it. Any questions from board members? Anybody in the public like to make a comment? All right, come on up Veronica.
Veronica Blake, Plaster Community Foundation. I want to thank Raoul and Nikki for a fabulous presentation on the census outreach plan for Plaster County and the whole Plaster Counts campaign. I want to emphasize to your board and to everyone in this room how lucky we are to have their passion, their talent, and their leadership focused on this issue. I'd also like to point out how impressive this effort's been as an example of a public-private partnership. I've been doing a lot of them. And in the past 25 years, this is my most favorite, most successful, and easiest team to work with. It's a model of true collaboration. The coalition has really cultivated a style of teamwork where we've been able to really capitalize on our strengths and produce a synchronized effort for the campaign. We've drawn the best from each other, and we've been partners, not divided entities. It's incredibly energizing to be on a team where everyone's pulled their own weight and then some. Not only is the accurate census count going to ensure resources for our community, but the relationships that we're building today by working together on this initiative are going to pay dividends into the future. I, like Nikki, want to acknowledge the terrific work by our team, including Dennis DeSalle, who's the map master, Katie Combs-Pritchard, and Scott Sandow for their extraordinary communications work. Joel Joyce, Kaitlyn Hopkins, Cara Conklin, Janice LaRue, and Michelle Hamel from my shop are all just doing extraordinary work. And then, our nonprofit partners that are creating the positive surround sound for the census. And that would be Sierra Community House, Latino Leadership Council, Light House Family Resource Center, Kids First, Plaster People of Faith Together. So, with that said, I just want to thank you for the opportunity. We're going to do this better together, and it's a delight to be on this team. Thank you.
Thank you Veronica. Nice job on the video. And I'm taking it, you did the Spanish version as well?
No, that was.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Well, thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Okay, appreciate it. Bring it back to our board. And I have a motion to adopt the resolution. Move from Yuler and Second by Holmes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update. All right, we're going to move to item 3, which is the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Midyear Fiscal Update. Good morning, Daniel.
Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board. I am Daniel Chatney, your County Budget Officer, looking for... The remote. I'm here this morning to present to you a Fiscal Year 2019-20 midyear budget update. Building off our first quarter budget update that we presented to your board in November, our current year projections are coming into better focus. And I'm pleased to report year-end projections are overall in line with our adopted budget. In your detailed packet in the staff report, the full midyear update includes current year actuals as a percentage of the annual budget, and current year actuals compared to the end of the second quarter of fiscal year 2018-19, along with more detailed descriptions of the major items affecting our current budget status. Your packet also presents current end-of-year forecasts for some of our major operating funds. For this morning's presentation, I will focus on just the current year budget and the projections. So, starting with the 2019-20, the 2019-20 general fund projection. Overall, general fund revenues are projecting to come in a little bit higher than budget, about a 2% increase. And on the expenditure side, we are projecting, coming in under budget at about 7.7%. Projections for salaries and benefits, as well as services and supplies, are below the adopted operations budget by nearly $20 million. There's also an increase in capital expenditures of $15 million midway through the fiscal year. In our Health and Human Services Fund, based on our current trends for this year, we project that Health and Human Services reimbursements from other governmental agencies will be about $2.1 million below budget, which would correspond to lower expenses as well. Due to the same expenses being below budget, we expect that the net county cost to support Health and Human Services will be reduced by $1.1 million at year-end. In our Public Safety Fund, the Public Safety Fund has been updated, project that it will end this fiscal year with revenues and expenses being in alignment with little to no draw in reserves. There's a correction that should be made on this chart, and that is on the intergovernmental revenue line. As you can see, year-to-date actuals of $24.2 million and a year-end projection of $20.8 million. So, those would be, those will be adjusted to reflect no less than we've actually already received for this fiscal year. And then, again, that would balance out revenues and expenses to about $208 million in total. There is an increase in capital expenditures from the adopted budget by about $2.4 million. That's a carryover of a capital project that wasn't completed in fiscal year 2018-19. And so, that carryover into 1920 will have no net impact on the Public Safety Fund. In our County Library Fund, the planned use of reserves at the adopted budget will be negated by updated property tax revenue projections of nearly $800,000. And expenses are currently trending below budget, especially in the salary and benefits area. In the Fire Control Fund, which is just one component of the overall county fire protection services, this budget receives an annual general fund contribution. And driven by an increase in expected revenue of $330,000 and a projected CAL FIRE contract expenses coming in below budget, the overall financial position for the fire fund has improved over budget by about $670,000. The 2019-20 Road Fund supports various projects throughout the county. And our midyear budget report just details a lot of those projects that might be of interest to your board and to your constituents. Much of the bridge and major highway projects are funded with federal dollars. So, we wanted to show you a chart that projects highway user tax and RMRA revenues to come in right around budget. And as SB 1 revenues continue to come in more over time, projections from our CSAC partners and others are getting more accurate and as these projections become easier to forecast. The 2019-20 Capital Fund, as mentioned earlier, the general fund capital reserves have increased over budget for this fiscal year. Several of the high-profile projects are listed on this chart. And following this budget update, facilities will be giving a midyear update on their capital projects as well. But some of those projects that were supported by the general fund in just the first half of this year is the Nay House property, a $1.3 million general fund contribution. And that was designed for regional, to achieve regionable, regional achievable housing needs. Sorry, it's on Twitter. The Kirby Hills Project, $11.6 million. And that's to support continued operation of Health and Human Services Service, Health and Human Services psychiatric services. The Elections Warehouse Purchase to provide functional working space and storage of elections equipment. And then, the Plaster Valley Sports and Events Complex, a $4 million contribution to support Plaster Valley tourism. As part of our midyear budget update, we reforecasted our five-year general fund fund balance projections based on our current 2019-20 projections. So, this chart reflects the changes occurring in the fund balance are related, mostly related to capital expenditures and unassigned fund balance. The general reserves and contingency represents an amount set aside per board policy in a minimum amount of 5%. And this amount remains relatively unchanged through the five-year projection. The PARZ Reserve for additional pension savings above and beyond our annual contribution shows moderate growth year-over-year, which is a reminder as a savings for future pension obligations above our required annual contributions. Capital reserves fluctuates with the planned capital outlays for an HHS admin building, Plaster Parkway, Burton Creek, and Crime Lab. The capital fund balance does not reflect any major sources of reimbursements to the capital reserves. So, what's next for our fiscal year 2019-20 budget and for the 2021 budget? On April 21st, departments will be presenting to you their 2021 budget requests with discussions around emerging issues and department priorities. We'll be looking at supplemental requests and any major capital expenditures in the projected 2021 budget. On May 5th, we expect to be back with a fiscal year 2019-20 third-quarter budget update. On June 9th, we'll conduct a public hearing and board consideration for the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. And on June 23rd, return for adoption of the fiscal year 2021 final budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, appreciate the update. Any questions from board members? Supervisor Yuler.
Question on the bar charts where you're showing the additional contributions to the PARZ reserve. That is the reserve that we are building separate apart from our payments made to CAL PERS and the account they keep for us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Does what we are accumulating in that reserve get reflected in our ARC? Does PERS recognize that reserve when they calculate our ARC? Or do they just calculate based on what they hold of our fund?
That's correct.
So, our ARC does not diminish even though we are funding above our... Well, we are, let me, we are driving toward total funding of our obligation faster than they recognize. So, our ARC does not reduce.
That is correct supervisor.
Do we know why they don't recognize that?
We'll be going through our actuarial recalculation in the near coming months. And so, we will be reporting back on the overall position of our pension liability coverage, as well as our OPEB liability coverages, and bringing that all back to the board for review.
But when they, I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but when they do their actuarial evaluation of our percentage of funded for both OPEB and pension, they are not taking into account what it is we're building up outside of their fund?
My understanding is that they are not, not in calculating our annual required contribution.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, thank you.
With a nod from the auditor controller.
Okay. All right, all right. Wow, that, so we need to, because their number obviously gets published, right? They, when they, they calculate the unfunded liability that each jurisdiction has, their number is what gets pushed out. We've got to clearly make sure that folks understand that whatever number they are publishing for our pension obligation is fairly substantially understated based on what it is we're doing outside of their fund.
Correct, which is, which is why we intend to continue to bring these numbers forward to your board as part of our budget updates, the new budget recommendation in June, just to make sure that the public is also made aware of those facts.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, other questions?
I have one quick question, and that is with the Public Safety Fund. And overtime has been a big issue in the past with the sheriff's office. How are they tracking this year with overtime? Is it in budget? Where are we at?
So, in the fiscal year 1920 budget, the overtime ledger was, was increased to accommodate past history of the actual overtime expenses. They are on track to use all of that overtime budget. It's essentially offset with the salary savings that they're also holding in that same, so there's not really a net difference in salaries and benefits costs. It's just being consumed in the overtime category versus permanent salaries.
So, we shouldn't have any surprise budget hit at the end of the year?
At this point, with our current projections, we're not expecting any surprises.
Great, I am very glad to hear that, thank you.
I think the only thing, yeah.
And maybe positive surprise.
Yeah.
It's a better surprise.
And I think the only thing that I picked up on was the sick leave balances that were being paid out, which.
Yes, unplanned.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? All right, we'll close public comment. And do we need to take an action?
I do have a follow-up question.
Oh, you have follow-up questions?
Yeah, please. So, we probably ought to spend some time figuring out what it is we're going to need to do to get that. to get that recognized, because there will come a time when our ARC will be in excess of what our liability is. And one of the reasons why our board made this decision a decade or so ago to begin advance paying on the OPEB and then turn our attention to pensions is we knew that by doing so, we would, there would come a time when our ARC would diminish, thereby freeing up general fund dollars for other priorities, because we would have reached a position of being considered fully funded or close enough to fully funded where that ARC is dropping. We ought to start now trying to figure out what we need to do in order to get credited for where that reserve sits.
Yeah, Supervisor Yuler, as part of kind of a subgroup of the Finance Committee, the Auditor Controller and I are beginning to meet with our representatives from both the PARs Trust as well as our Servit Trust, and then looking at the overall strategy for both OPEB funding, future OPEB liability funding and pension funding. And a lot of this discussion will occur in the next couple of months, and we'll bring back, hopefully bring back recommendations to the board to, you know, modify our strategies or other activities that we need to take to make sure that we are addressing our full account.
Thank you.
Please.
Great. Thank you. All right. Appreciate the update. Yes, good news. So thanks for your hard work. We will move to item four, which is update, Facilities Management update fiscal year 2019-2020 mid-year capital improvement plan.
Good morning. I am Steve Newsom, Director of Facilities Management. And here's our, okay, here to give you the mid-year capital update. There's three major categories that we operate within, new facilities, renovation and rehabilitation. As you can see, we have a long list of new facilities, projects, and some of those also include real estate acquisitions. Renovation projects, which as a reminder to you, these are the annual requests from Departments. We budgeted one and a quarter million annually. And once a year, the Departments submit their requests for modifications, improvements, et cetera, to their facilities based on changes in their programs, staffing, et cetera. And then rehabilitation, this, if you recall, the software that we use, the VFA software, identifies major systems within our facilities that are scheduled due to age and condition to be replaced. Last year, we were thankful that your board allocated 5 million dollars for the last fiscal year. This year, it's 2 million dollars. And I'll, I'll get into all of these in just a moment here in greater detail. But what I wanted to do is I wanted to recognize people that are making a lot of this happen. We're extremely busy, and we have a fantastic Department. This is, with the exception of Tim Arnt, who couldn't make this photo, our Capital Improvements Division. And some of them are here in the audience. Wave or whistle or something. Good. And so I'm really happy to draw attention to the talent that we have that accomplishes this. The Building Maintenance Division, which is headed up by Brad Boulay, is second to none. The skills, the commitment, and just the positive attitude that these people have in keeping our aging facilities going is remarkable.
Just want to let you know that we see your facilities people in here all the time.
Yeah, I don't know why. This is relatively new and.
Right. Just saying.
Yeah. Yeah, we do have some needy facilities, and they're tirelessly working to keep things afloat. Our Real Estate Services Division are tremendously talented in a variety of transactional operations that they do, from acquisitions to sale of property to lease negotiations, et cetera. So they deserve a lot of recognition, too. And then our Band of Gypsies, which is really the, kind of the thing that helps keep us all in line is this group, our Accounting Division. And they have gone through a tremendous amount of change over the past year through implementation of Workday, through changes in staffing, through different methods that we are budgeting for and rolling out our capital program. So I'm extremely grateful for all that they do. So with that, I will roll into the facilities. So this is the new Coroner Facility, and I'll just give you a reminder, this is a visual similar to what I presented last year, where the top bar is the budget. And so you'll see on the top of that bar, our budget for design and construction for this facility, we had a range that we expected our proposals to come in at, 21 to 25 million dollars. We are currently at approximately 24.1 million dollars. And this, I'm very grateful that Genevieve Vargas, our senior architect who is managing this project, is working extremely well with the design build team in order to hold the cost where the original contract stipulated. And we have less than a year of construction of this facility to go. We are on schedule at this time. And when this is done, we will have people from around the country, local government administrators, designers, et cetera, who will come and visit this facility because of the quality that it will provide for the functions that they serve. And there's a star here on this that shows you the location of where the facility is. Okay, the South Placer Jail Mental Health Housing, Senate Bill 863. If you recall, this is a, an addition to the main building there, and it's primarily funded by the state. And because of that, you'll see that the bottom schedule, we're way behind the original schedule. You know, when you work with the state and you get funding from the state, there's a lot of hoops that have to be jumped through, and we've been doing a diligent job here. Lisa James is doing an outstanding job in order to respond to their needs. And it's finally moving forward. You'll see the green arrow below, we're getting ready for our design build RFP to roll out. And so that'll be moving forward here shortly. The other state-funded project, the more of a vocational facility is going, as you can see by the star, it's going to, at the east side of the medium security housing. And this, much like the 863 project, funded primarily by the state. So our proposed schedule, you know, we're behind that at this time. We are working very diligently in order to stay on target for our budget. That's been a challenge, because as you know, the economy has brought with it a lot of construction escalation over the last few years. So that's an ongoing challenge for all of our projects right now. So we're having to be creative and try to move things along as quickly as we can. Auburn Jail retrofit, this is another project of Lisa James's. And it's, this is an actual photo that I took of it, the upper photo. So that project is nearly complete. However, we did have a little bump in the road with the BSCC and their review and approval of our bunk beds. And so we have a change that needs to occur. It's a ligature issue that will be, you'll see more of this in the near future, because we have a budget challenge due to the modifications that have to be made to that. Not enormous, however. It did affect the schedule as well as the budget, but we're nearly complete on that project. The new HHS building, very excited that that project is moving along. We are in the middle of our criteria development, criteria documents development, and we're on schedule with it. And we will be rolling out this summer our design build RFP for this project. It's going to be really the largest building at the Placer County Government Center, and it will enable HHS to consolidate a lot of their services and staff and administration, et cetera. So in our target, we're still maintaining our target budget for the overall project cost of 90 million dollars. Along with any new construction up there at the DeWitt Center is infrastructure. You can see this map here shows varicose veins of all sorts of utilities throughout the campus, everything from telecom, electricity, water, sewer, gas, et cetera. Paul Breckenridge has done a tremendous job with our master plan for the campus up there. And the total infrastructure project is much larger than the 2 million dollars that's budgeted here. And what we'll do is develop scopes, budgets, and schedules, you know, as we roll out the implementation of that entire campus and do it in a logical way, so that we're not undoing things as we move forward with different projects and so forth. Tahoe Justice Center, this is a project long overdue, as everyone is aware. And the good news about this is that we have hired a consultant expert who is near and dear to TRPA, who has been helping us determine just exactly what is buildable, what portion of the land on this site is buildable per, you know, TRPA's designation. And it's been very encouraging, what he's found. And that, you know, gets knocked down a little bit with TRPA's review of that, but we're confident that the Burton Creek site will be the site that we hope to do this facility on, which I know is the preferred site by all of those Departments that are housed here to begin with. So our budget is at 50 to 60 million dollars at this time, and that we don't see a reason why we would not be able to meet that. So we're hoping that in the next five years, we would have this facility in place. Okay, the, this is the often called the Mercy Housing Project, because we're working with Mercy in the development of this facility. And they were successful in securing their 9% tax credit, which was their ultimate goal in making this project financially feasible. And with that comes a tight timeline that they are working towards in order to get a permit and start moving dirt here in the summer or fall of this year. So we are right now, as you can see on the schedule, in design, and construction would start shortly. Budget's not shown here, because this is a combination of things that the county is contributing, you know, the value of the land, staff time, et cetera, that all plays into their formula for the approval of the funding that they are seeking. The Fairgrounds, this project just recently had its grand opening. I know the majority of you were there. This is a recent photo of it. This is, this facility has the largest wood floor in the state of California, is what I heard. It is immense, and it was really, really well done. And I think for many decades, it'll be a great resource for our county. And you can see here that our, the county's contribution was 6 million dollars. Down at the bottom, strangely, the schedule, the green arrow at the bottom, is ahead of the proposed schedule. So that's something that we can credit to Mark Wright out and working with the construction team there. So it actually finished ahead of schedule. So that's a great thing, and it's a beautiful facility. Okay, now, some of you have probably noticed the new solar panels that have been going up all over the PCGC campus and then down at Santucci as well, and soon to be at Rockland. We are in the city of Rockland, we're dealing with their building department. So we're, you know, we were delayed a little bit in getting through that in order to get to the construction phase. So these are recent photos up near the Fab and CDRC buildings. And so we're just a little bit behind schedule by about a month overall for this. But, you know, very soon, we'll start saving money on our electricity purchase through PG&E, and we'll have shaded parking all over the place. So that'll be good. Everyone's been very cooperative, because we've had to displace cars, and that's a sore subject with many people. Lisa James, again, has been doing a great job with outreach and communication, keeping people informed of this. So I think the disruption has been minimized quite a bit. Real Estate Services, there's some major acquisitions that have been completed recently. Atherton is a new building in Rockland that for the Elections Clerk Recorder and Elections Office, for their operation there. Kirby Hills, which is a facility that we have been leasing for many, many years, and we recently purchased that. So that will continue to function in its current state. And the Nay House Property, which will be used, as Daniel Chatney eloquently stated, for regional achievable housing there. Okay, renovation projects, if you recall, these are the requested projects by the different Departments. You see over here on the right, there are five of those that are in the 19 and 20 fiscal year, and then the status of those. The first one being a remodel in our building, which is at the pre-construction stage now. The agricultural storage expansion, we're in the middle of design on that. New library shade structure for outside reading and gathering is also in design. Probation office expansion in construction, and the treasurer tax collector cubicle reconfigure is also in design as well. And then ongoing projects, year in, year out, are the accessibility improvements and then security and safety improvements. Rehabilitation projects, if you recall, this is, these are the scopes of work identified by VFA. And then our maintenance team sees what VFA indicates needs to be done. They review it, and they may adjust it based on the condition that they find in the field of those. So here's our mid-year update for this year. 30% of them are completely done. 17% are in construction or bidding, because some of the scopes of work are beyond our staff's capabilities. And so we're, we utilize outside contractors and consultants, too, for some of the design work. And then 53% are in planning or design. And down here at the bottom, there was a concern last year, because we got, I think it was the highest amount of money the county may have ever allocated for building maintenance for, it was 5 million dollars. If you recall, this year, it's 2 million dollars. So there was a concern, hey, do we have the ability to even get that done? So I just wanted to note that 100% of those projects have been completed or rescheduled, rescheduled, meaning that they go out, they look at it, and they say, you know what, this is not as bad as anticipated, so we're going to push this out another year or two and then come back and reassess it. So proud to say that Brad and his team have been consistently just getting things done. Speaking of which, this is up there, PCGC, recent large-scale project within the future corp yard, if you will, the 300 ramp of buildings. This was an effort where last year, we identified and showed you all how we were going to combine projects. VFA says you need a new roof here, you need painting, you need windows here. Instead of having three different projects with three different contracts and all the costs that go with that, we combined them. So this is now complete. New roofs, new paint, and new windows on several of our buildings there. Notable projects, some of the things that are a little behind the scenes, like boilers. You have a jail that operates 24 hours a day, and you need a new boiler, highly complex project that the facility needs to continue operating. And this is just a couple pictures of that project. And then on the right, the Tahoe Customs House, the electrical upgrade and the And then on the right, the Tahoe Customs House, the electrical upgrade and the emergency generator backup power. That, too, very, very complicated electrically, but wanted to bring a couple of photos to draw attention to that. So, with the dog and pony show comes the action requested. So, we are seeking approval of our budget amendments, increasing the following capital project budgets, and canceling the general fund reserves assigned for capital projects by $850,000. So, the Tahoe Justice Center planning, we're seeking $80,000 as we're moving that project forward. The South Placer Kitchen Drain Repair, this is a recent Health Department identified issue that we need to resolve as soon as possible. And then the Auburn Justice Center Envelope Repairs, which has been an ongoing project since the building was built early. So, with that, that's the action requested, and if you have questions, ready to answer them.
All right. Great. Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the hard work you and your team are doing. Questions from board members? Cindy.
Quick question. Going back to the slide that had the 18, 19 completed projects, you said 100% were completed or rescheduled?
Correct.
Because that was before my time here. What percentage were completed versus rescheduled? Do you know, approximately dollar by?
Percentage-wise, probably 85 to 90% were completed.
85 to 90 completed, and obviously 10 to 15 rescheduled.
Rescheduled to future.
Right.
Okay.
So, the way that works is that the VFA software is based on age of equipment and so forth. So, it predicts when something will need to be replaced. And so, then our staff, it's a tickler. It says, hey, that needs to be done. Oh, well, let's check it.
Right. Right. Great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. See, no other board member comments. I'll open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? And we will bring it back to the board. And... Motion by Uller and a second by Gustafson. Rule call, please. Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Uller?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Gore?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Time for department items. We'll move on to the auditor. Fees for accounting services offered to special districts and joint powers authorities. Good morning, Mr. Sisk. It's still morning.
It is. Good morning, Chairwoman Gore, members of the board, Todd and Karen. I'm here today to ask the board to allow the auditor controller via resolution to negotiate and execute memorandums of understanding to provide certain accounting services to special districts and joint powers authorities located in the county of Placer. To give you a little bit of history, back in the 80s and 90s, your auditor controller was Kim Buck Williams, Jr. Kim Buck made it a point and emphasized that he was going to provide services to many special districts, and along with that service, that would be free of charge. Keep in mind that some of these special districts were part of the county family, and then they morphed into becoming their own special district, like the Air Pollution Control District. The training services were provided internally until we formed a JPA called Golden Sierra Job Training. So, some of those entities are in the county's cost allocation plan. We've got about four or five of those entities. As we move forward into the 2000s, Kathy Martinez became your auditor controller. And in the 2000s, there were significant changes related to accounting and auditing standards. Being a numbers guy, I'm going to share some numbers with you. In 2002, the county implemented GASB-34, which required us to present two sets of financial statements, one on the full accrual basis, one on the modified or near-term cash basis. In 18 years, GASB was formed, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, for those that don't know GASB. In 18 years, when they were formed in 1984, they issued 34 standards. We are now in the year 2020, and 58 new accounting standards have been issued in 16 years. So, that adds to the complexity of the accounting work that needs to be provided, not only in the county's financial statements, but also these accounting standards apply to special districts and JPAs. In addition, the auditing standards changed. We might remember the collapse of Enron, the collapse of Arthur Andersen, one of the big, which was the grade eight at the time, and now we're down to the final four in terms of the big firms. And because of some of these auditing standards, it forced staff in those districts and JPAs to have the knowledge to prepare a set of financial statements. We recognize many of these districts and JPAs did not have the staff capable of preparing a set of financial statements. If they didn't, again, contract with the auditor controller to prepare said statements, they would have a material weakness in their internal controls because they didn't have staff competent to do the job. So, as time evolved, we kept doing these services, and we would charge to do a compilation because a compilation would require an engagement letter. If we were going to do an audit of a special district, we have to enter into that, just like a normal CPA firm would have to do. The other complexity was, we then hit the Great Recession in 2007, 2008, and the grand jury would recommend in their reports, we'll go to the auditor controller. They provide payroll for free. And so, Newcastle Fire was one of the first ones, I recall. And then word got out that we were providing free payroll service. And I think the last district that we brought on that we stopped doing free service was North Tahoe Fire. And they came to us in 2015. I asked them some questions, and they said, well, we're coming to you because it's free. And I told North Tahoe Fire, we're happy to provide payroll service, but going forward, it's no longer free. We then did some research on what other payroll service companies charged, and we're providing, I think, a great rate to the special districts and providing good payroll services. And we now service about 13, 14 different special districts in providing that payroll service. It's now time to integrate all of these into one agreement. So, we don't have all these little one-offs. It's, we provide a number of comprehensive services that we really are not getting reimbursed for. And so, this MOU is going to allow us to provide a little more equitable, fair, and reasonable, transparent services to everybody, provide more consistency, so I don't have districts saying, you're charging this person nothing, and you're charging me X. And also keep in mind, this is not in the board report. We have separate laws and resolutions that guide us on what we charge for property taxes. So, property taxes is not part of that. That's all driven by past legislative action, which is Senate Bill 2557, which goes way back to the property tax apportionment process. Of course, redevelopment dissolution had a provision in there for the auditor controller to get reimbursed for those services. And so, that's not part of this agreement. So, that is kind of a summary of what we've done, a little history, a little background. I knew the time was going to come that I'd have to make this presentation, and I think Workday, the implementation, has kind of forced me to really bring this forward, along with just a number of conversations I've had with special districts and JPAs over the years. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. That's okay. Andy, thank you. And I think this is great to consolidate these. How have you worked with the special districts to make sure they're aware of what's coming?
In the implementation of Workday, we've had a number of user group meetings, and special districts had their own focus. And during those sessions, we've, I've articulated many times that there will be a charge coming in fiscal year 2021. They're aware that this is coming. Some of them are already paying for the service because they do have an MOU with the payroll services we are providing. Some of them have asked us to do compilations of their financial statements, which we direct bill for. So, they're aware it's coming, and we're going to have a, you know, each one will be designed and catered to each district because the services we provide to Tahoe City Cemetery, it's much different than the service we provide to Colfax Cemetery.
So, as far as magnitude of change, they're expecting a change, and they're preparing in their own budgets to accommodate that change.
That's why I need to roll this out in March so that they can get this rolled into their budget, so they do know it's coming. Hopefully, there'll be no sticker shocks, but, you know, I'm always willing to work with the districts. We're not going to charge them more than what the cost is of the service. And to give you an example, I mean, I know that an ADP for payroll charges at least $100 to process payroll. We're charging $25 per pay period, as one example, for some of the smaller districts.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. I will open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? And we'll bring it back to the board, and I'll have a clerk read the motion, please.
Adopt a resolution to allow the auditor controller to negotiate and execute memorandums of understanding for fees associated with accounting services offered to special districts and JPAs on an annual basis.
Motion by Wygant, second by Holmes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your hard work, too. Okay. We have item 6A. Todd, do you want to report on that, please?
Yes. So, after the conversations we've had with folks regarding this Western Placer County voluntary interim in-lu fee program, we would propose pulling this item for the time being as we continue to work on discussions with our staff internally about this program consistent with moving forward the PCCP program. So, barring any conversations, we'd propose tabling this for a future date.
All right. Great. Thank you. We will remove item 6A and move to item 6B, which is the Western Placer Construction Website and Construction Inspection App. Good morning, Mr. Pedretti.
Good morning. Steve Pedretti, Community Development Resource Agency. As you're aware, we expect a bit of an uptick in construction this year in our specific plan areas in West Placer. In reaction to that, our staff in our Engineering Surveying Division have been making some improvements. We're going to highlight a couple of those this morning. First up will be a new website that we put together that shows the location of construction. This website's been up for three days. I asked it, we tried to do a live demo today, so if it fails, it's all on me. It's my fault. We're also going to do a brief presentation on a new technology, a construction inspection app, where our folks can use their cell phones and actually create their reports in the field. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Rebecca Tabor, our Deputy Director over the Engineering Surveying Division.
Thank you, Steve. Rebecca Tabor, again. I'm actually going to switch the order and talk about the construction inspection app first. But, thank you for this opportunity to share these two great tools with you today. Your CDRA staff has worked hard to put these together, and we find that these are going to be very useful moving forward into this busy, very busy 2020 construction year and First is the Construction Inspector App. This app was developed for, to better utilize our existing resources and improve efficiencies in construction inspection. Previously, our inspectors would spend hours in the office after a day out in the field, and they'd upload photos, type up their notes, and create these Word documents, daily field reports. So, now, with this app, they can use their cell phones to collect the field data, photos, and the daily field reports are actually generated out of Acela, which is our permit system. So, we're better utilizing Acela. As I stated, ESD and IT staff developed this in-house. We didn't have to use consultants. In the process, our engineers worked on more improved streamlined daily field report format. And it's kind of cool, you can use verbal dictation out in the field, and it saves time, as opposed to typing. You could type on your phone, but you could actually do the observations on your phone, much like a text messaging. Photos and data are automatically collected and archived in Acela, and that's a plus. So, overall, this saves the inspector's time. It gives more field time for our staff and less office time. These are four screenshots of what you would see on the phone. I'm going to use the cursor here. Oh, it does work. So, in the office, the inspector would schedule an inspection in the morning, and then they would go out and choose the checklist here. And that pulls up another field where they go through, and they check weather condition, traffic control, if that's relevant, BMP status, what's going on out in the field. The big field that they'll, or part that they'll fill out is the general observations. What kind of construction activity is happening? What kind of equipment is out there? What are they actually doing? Right here, there's a button for attaching photos. You can take photos directly through the app, or you can pull them off your phone and upload them here. So, when the inspection is complete, they will result it, which means it gets saved into Acela, directly into the permit system. And then back in the office, the daily field report is generated. So, this is an example of the daily field report, front and back. So, instead of typing these up, like we were saying earlier, in Word documents, once a day at night, the system sweeps, Acela sweeps the system and creates these PDFs of these, they're automatically generated reports, and they're saved in a folder, shared drive folder. So, it's saving a lot of time for staff. It's really a great tool. So, I just wanted to pause there and recognize and thank the staff, the team that put this together. The engineers in our office, Matt Bartholomew, Fred Stam, and our CEDRA IT folks, Justin McKenzie and Gary Lewis. They had to customize this quite a lot. We first looked to see if other jurisdictions had a tool that we could borrow, but really there wasn't something that we quite could do. So, we created this unique tool, and I think we're cutting edge. We're ahead of other jurisdictions. They're probably going to want to copy us. So, the next tool that I wanted to share is a communication tool. This is the website. The location is above their current construction. The idea here is that there's a lot of projects going on, private development projects. Primarily, Western Placer is where we started focusing this effort to create a tool so that the public, commuters, surrounding jurisdictions even, can get a sense of where the projects are and what kind of construction activities might affect their day-to-day. So, the website, I'm going to switch to that in just a sec. It shows the project locations on an interactive map, description of work, developer contact info, and then the approximate duration of work. There we go. Okay. So, when you click on that link, you get to this website, Western Placer Construction You have some links here to get to some specific plan information. If you want to know more about the projects, we even included a link to Sierra Vista, the project in the city of Roseville that's off Baseline Road, currently in construction. We included the County Willerga Road Bridge Replacement Project webpage link as well. So, when you click on the interactive map, it pulls up a GIS-based tool, shows Western Placer area. And you can look at the legend, which has the shading color-coded for the different, some different projects. The city limits are in red. So, you can see we've shown Lincoln and Rockland, Roseville, Auburn. As you zoom in, we've included Sutter Point's, got a specific plan project out that way. And here's the city of Roseville, Sierra Vista. As you zoom in, you can get more definition and details in the legend, color coding for the projects. Turn that off for now. So, for instance, you can click on a project. This one is Placer Vineyards Property 1A. And there's the contact information, and then the current construction status. This one just completed grading in the fall. And so, now they're moving into the actual intract improvements to start in the spring of 2020. Model homes may start fall of 2020. 324 finished lots is the plan. If I was to click on this intersection here, this is Willerga and PFE Road intersection improvements. Contact information, Rio of Vineyards is upsizing and widening and doing signal modification starting spring 2020. So, there's going to be activity at Willerga Road here, this intersection, and then, of course, the county's bridge project is still ongoing. We've included that. They're supposed to be complete 2021. So, this is a very busy part of the county. supposed to be complete 2021. So this is a very busy part of the county. And I wanted to just point out, too, we included some road maintenance projects, as well as number of development projects, Placer Vineyards, and other smaller subdivisions. So again, before I go to next steps, I want to recognize the team that put this together. This was done in about a month. And folks had a lot going on, but they found time. And we really appreciate Claudia Wade, Adrian Compton, and then IT Jason Portlock and Dennis DeSalle did the GIS. So they really stepped up to the task and delivered this. And we're going to be keeping this up. It's very dynamic. As projects get approved for construction, we'll be adding them. We're going to work with the PIO to communicate the website location, get it in newsletters. We'll be sharing it with the West Placer community at the March 23rd workshop that's planned. We're going to add more project information, and especially traffic control updates as contractors are on board, and we know that they may have a road closure. There might be detours. We'll get that in here. So we also do intend to expand the website to include the entire Placer County, get Tahoe, Granite Bay, Auburn, get other projects on here. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. Supervisor Euler.
So the, the construction inspection app, that was done entirely in-house? So we own all the intellectual property associated with that?
I'm not sure we own everything. It's Acela. We used Acela in doing this. In fact, one of the problems we had was last fall, we did the testing, we started to utilize it. Acela did an update that wiped out the functionality, and we had to redo some things to get it going. So we're utilizing theirs.
But we did the app based on the Acela platform, so that...
Yes.
Okay. We need to protect that intellectual property, and we should probably reach out to Acela since they are a software-as-a-service provider that is already in the business of selling software to governments, do a licensing agreement with them where they can then sell it to other jurisdictions, but we own the intellectual property and we get a percentage of the sale.
Okay, we will check into that.
My business would be happy to do that deal with you today if I didn't have an obvious conflict. But this is a, this is an obvious play for a software-as-a-service company that already has built-in government clients. You've built something that's, that's very useful in the field and has good market demand, and I would strongly suggest we take the steps necessary to protect that intellectual property and go strike some deals with some folks who already have existing government clients.
Okay, we'll check into it and see if we are indeed the first ones and have some kind of intellectual property.
Great suggestion. Supervisor Gustafson.
Well, of course, I'm going to ask when you think you might be able to expand it because it's been a great effort to this point. So what are your, what are your thoughts on that?
Very near horizon. You know, the Tahoe projects don't start up with construction again until May 1st, so we have a little time. So we were thinking about that. I think we can work on that in the next couple of months.
That would be great, and then maybe we could call it Placer Construction Website.
We will retitle, we will relabel it, yes.
And I want to say thank you so much because this is really as a result of all the projects that are happening in West Placer, and we had nothing happening for many years. And now, as dirt is being moved, people are a little bit surprised. And so as much as we can be communicating with our residents, the better. So thank you so much. This is really terrific. It'll be really helpful for folks when they want to know what's going on, or even myself and my staff, if I want to know what's going on, and I can give them the information directly instead of actually having to bug your staff. You know, if I can answer the question right then and there, the information's on the website. That just saves a lot of time.
Everybody's time.
Yeah, so thank you. What a great job. Really appreciate your work on this.
And it is new. It's been up for a few days, so there are probably some improvements we need to make. If anybody sees anything, wants additional information or new things, let us know. And I just want to express how freaking proud I am of the CEDRA staff. They continue to come through. I think I channeled Kirk Euler and scheduled this hearing before the website was actually put together to make sure that happened on time. And I'm just very proud of the people that we have. They're really, these incremental innovations like this construction app, I think are really helping us out over the long term.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you so much for the update. Appreciate it. Okay, it's time to move on to Health and Human Services. This is item 7A, Adult and Children's Specialty Mental Health Services Contract with Uplift Family Services. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. So, good morning Supervisor Gore and distinguished members of the board. I'm Amy Ellis, and I'm here today with Twila Abrahamson from the Children's System of Care, and to present a joint item for the delivery of mental health services in the Tahoe region through Uplift Family Services. There are two actions being requested today. First, to approve the award of Competitive Request for Proposal Number 100244 to Uplift Family Services to provide adult and children's specialty mental health services. And second, to approve an agreement related to the RFP Number 100244 with Uplift Family Services to provide adult and children's specialty mental health services in the total amount of $700,000 for the period of February 25th, 2020 through December 30th, December 31st, 2020, and authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the agreement and to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed $70,000, consistent with the subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. So Placer joined actually with Nevada County to complete an RFP for the selection of a qualified firm to provide Tahoe Truckee Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Services. Uplift Family Services was awarded the opportunity to continue providing specialty mental health services for children and to begin providing adult specialty mental health services to adults. Combining services with one sole organization is the most efficient and cost-effective model needed for the Tahoe residents. Uplift Family Services is one of the largest, most comprehensive nonprofit mental health treatment programs in California. They specialize in complex behavioral health challenges and help individuals recover from trauma, abuse, neglect, addiction, and poverty. For Placer youth served by Uplift's most intensive service type, in 2018-19, 93% remained with their families and their community and were not required to be placed in costly foster care and other out-of-home care, and 100% were not on formal or informal probation, and 88% were attending school successfully. It's fully anticipated that Tahoe's adult residents will receive similar positive outcomes demonstrated previously to children and families. Specialty outpatient mental health services help individuals with mental illness receive the appropriate treatment in order to avoid unnecessary and expensive higher levels of psychiatric care. Medication support and case management services are critical components of services offered to stabilize symptoms. The fiscal impacts, the funding for this contract includes 10% in county general fund and 90% in federal and state, state mental health dollars. State funding will also include behavioral health and protective services realignment. All funding is included in the department's fiscal year 1920 budget and will be included in the fiscal year 2021 budget. Any questions?
Looks like no questions from board members. We'll open this up to the public and bring it back to the board. We've already had the motion read, so.
Move approval?
Move approval of Gustafson, second from Holmes. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item 7B, which is CalWorks Housing Support Program Services Contract Amendments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Chairperson Gore, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm Mandy Sharp, the Director of Human Services for Placer County Health and Human Services. Today, I'm here requesting approval of two contract amendments for our CalWorks Housing Support Program. The acronym for that is HSP. Our current contracts serving our HSP program are with Volunteers of America, Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing, and Stand Up Placer, but today's amended contracts brought forward would affect only the Volunteers of America and AMI contracts at this time. In July 2019, Placer County Human Services had an allocation of $578,759 for our HSP program. And we went to RFP in 2019, and our division was able to select some qualifying nonprofit applicants for our program and to serve homeless CalWorks families. Then, in 2019, this board approved acceptance of one, of a dollar amount of $1,6,531, allowing for the expansion of our project. This increase in funding was the result of a competitive application submitted after substantial efforts of our staff, including our program manager for CalWorks, Lisa Soto, who's here today. That represents a $427,772 increase to help serve homeless families. It's quite an amazing thing. Some background on the program, when the guy, with guidelines provided by the California Department of Social Services, CalWorks HSP programs can be designed at the county level to meet our own unique and local programmatic needs. Our program provides both temporary and permanent housing to, and homeless assistance, as well as move-in assistance, assistance with security deposits, and things like that. Our program, the rent assistance is provided, but the people receiving it have increased responsibility from 25% to 100% by the seventh month of residence. So there's a gradual increase of responsibility by those who are housed. And in fiscal year 2018-19, our program provided 200 months of full or partial rental payments. There's also a temporary service that's available to this for people seeking hotel or other short-term vouchers while they're seeking long-term. We've recently put in some data to the state on the successes of our programs. And just in last year, only, what I found is only three families returned to homelessness last year, and then were subsequently rehoused. And for those we were able to follow who graduated through the program, 70% indicated that, our data shows, 70% of those graduated out of the program related to sufficient employment income. So this is not only just helping people get housed. The CalWorks program is a program to help people get back to work. So it's very successful. The increase to our contracts today is also expected, of course, to expand the numbers of families we can serve. Depending on the cost of the units that people will be placed in, and the costs that people need for move-in assistance, it's difficult to get an exact estimate. But we think it's going to be somewhere between 20 and 28 more families just in the, with the additional funding, which is a pretty big accomplishment. So today, I'm here also to let you know that there's no fiscal general fund impact. We've already approved the funding your board has in December, but we're here today to do amendments to give the additional funding that was received through our application to enhance the contract so that they can serve those additional families. And so today, I'm here to bring item B, numbers one and two, to improve in number one, a contract amendment with Volunteers of America for the provision of CalWorks Housing Support Program. Services originally resulting from RFP 100208 for the period of September 1, 19, through June 30th of 2020, increasing their funding by $236,999 to an amount not to exceed $452,000, and to authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the contract with risk management and county council concurrence, and subsequent amendments up to $45,200, consistent with subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. Item two is nearly identical in the wording, except for that the contract amendment is with AMI, which is Advocates for Mentally Ill Housing, and the provision is the same RFP 100208 for the same period of time, increasing funding by $112,000 to an amount not to exceed $302,000, with subsequent amendments up to $30,200, authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services to sign the contract with risk management and county council concurrence. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Thank you for your time and consideration on our items.
Thank you very much, Amy. I do have just a couple of questions, and that is, how does the department identify the families, and is there a waiting list for these programs?
Okay, so this is a CalWorks program. So CalWorks families are identified when they come in and apply for CalWorks Temporary Aid to Needy Families Welfare to Work Benefits. So they come into the human services offices in Placer County, and they apply for assistance in that way. And there's a very detailed screening process that occurs at the time when a family comes in seeking assistance. We have a lot of data that's turned into the state on the variety of different statuses of housing a person would have, as well as their employment, what they would like to be able to do, what the amount of income they currently have, a variety of different answers, as well as a screening on their ancillary needs, childcare needs, transportation needs, if they have mental health or other wraparound-type services needs that are there. At that time, if a person is in need of housing, they are forwarded to the Housing Support Program to get started on their project. And as far as a waiting list is concerned, there isn't really a waiting list per se in the way our program works. What we do have is people who are seeking housing, people who have achieved housing, or people who have graduated from housing. So there's a number of people. Right now, with this funding, we believe we have sufficient funding for what is the known volume of applicants who come in. It doesn't mean that there aren't more families that need housing in the world. It means of the people that we have who've come in for assistance for CalWorks programs, we would either be in the process of reviewing them, helping them search, they are in the search process, they're housed, or they've graduated from housing. So as far as our waiting list, it's not really the same as a voucher program in that way.
Okay, great. That's helpful. Thank you. All right, let's open this up to the public. Any comments from the public? And we'll bring it back to the board, and the motions have already been read.
Time approval.
All right, motion by Holmes, second by Supervisor Weigant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No abstentions? Thank you very much.
And I'll introduce you to Lisa Soto, who's the program manager. She's fairly new to the division as well, so.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Welcome. Okay, we are moving to Facilities Management, item 8A, and it is the Placer County Auburn Jail Stucco Remediation Project.
Good morning, Board. My name is Genevieve Vargas, and I am a senior architect with Capital Improvements Division, and I am here today to talk about the Auburn Jail Stucco Remediation Project. We have three action items requested of you today. First, to award the bid of $1,48,770 and the alternate of $32,000 to PMP Construction of Applegate, California, in the total amount of $1,080,770. And to authorize the Director of Facilities Management or designee to execute a contract not to exceed $1,080,770 upon review and approval by county council and risk, including the authority to approve any necessary change orders not to exceed $64,938.50, consistent with the county purchasing manual and the public contract code. And to approve a fiscal year 1920 budget amendment, increasing the capital projects fund by $226,000 and canceling the general fund reserves assigned for capital projects resulting in $1,316,000 available toward the project cost. A little bit of background information on the project. In July of last year, your board approved plans and specifications and authorized solicitation of bids for the Auburn Jail Stucco Remediation Project, and authorized the Director of Facilities Management to award and execute a contract up to $1,020,000. Staff reported to your board that this project was needed and funded through litigation associated with the exterior rusting and staining on Housing Unit 4. The procurement services released a bid in August, and the bid was advertised in accordance with the public contract code. Bids were opened on September 12th of 2019, resulting in four bid responses. PMP Construction was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid of $1,48,770, with an alternate for the exterior lighting of $32,000. The bid amount exceeded the maximum contract amount authorized by your board. In addition, the funding available to the capital projects fund is insufficient after factoring in the additional construction cost and project management cost. Therefore, staff asked the bidder to hold the bid until early 2020 to accommodate a summer-spring, a spring-summer construction start, and allow time for us to secure the additional funding and authorization from the board. There is, the project is exempt from CEQA, and the fiscal impact is the estimated total project cost is $1,316,000, including $1,158,000 in construction fees and contingencies, and $158,000 in project management and overhead costs. The original project budget was estimated, or was established at $1,090,000, and the budget was established thousand, and the budget was established prior to the release of the bids and solicitations, which resulted in a cost that exceeded our budget. The new estimated project cost is one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, requiring two hundred and twenty-six thousand in additional funds. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? And we'll open it up to the public, any comments from the public? All right, we'll bring this back to the board, and the motions have been read, but we'll take each one separately. So if we can have a motion for item 8A1. Move approval from Euler, second by Holmes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and motion for item 8A2. Motion by Y, or Euler, second by Holmes, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and motion for 8A3.
Second.
All right, Euler and Wigant, or Holmes, roll call, please. Wigant?
Yes.
Holmes. Euler. Gustafson.
Aye.
Gore. Aye, thank you very much. We'll move on to item 9, 9A, On-Site Parts Warehouse Management Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Brett Wood, I'm your Purchasing Manager. I'm here today to request of you to approve an increase to our existing contract with Rebe's Auto Parts for providing onsite parts warehouse management services in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, increasing the maximum amount to a hundred and fifty, or one million, five hundred and fifty thousand through the period of March 31 of this year. We're also requesting at this time that you approve an option to renew the contract from April 1 of 2020 through March 31 of 2021, and four additional year, or four additional renewal terms, in a not-to-exceed amount of one point six million dollars, authorize change orders in an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, consistent with the procurement policy. And this request is to coincide with your board's earlier approval of the renewal terms, but will now reflect the increased pricing being requested today. So, in addition, we're asking your board's authority to authorize the Purchasing Manager to sign any required documents or paperwork with this. As a matter of background and history for your board, we originally presented this item in, in April of 2019, where we had presented to your board an option to use an onsite warehouse management program for the parts, for the Department of Public Works Garage, where they have, Rebe's actually main, runs the parts warehouse there. And this was originally anticipated to be about one point three five, but during the course of this last year, additional work has come into the garage in the matter of the sheriff has added some work that they were previously outsourcing to other agencies. They're now providing it through the in-house services with the county, hence resulting in a need for this increased cost. With that, happy to stand for any questions your board might have.
Thank you. So hopefully, they're saving some money by not outsourcing and bringing it in-house?
We have historically found that this is saving the department both money and time.
Great, okay, any other questions? Supervisor Euler?
Yeah, just quickly, out of curiosity, are warehousing flux capacitors, and do we have the one point twenty-one gigawatts necessary to power them?
I don't think I can answer that one, sir.
No, no flux capacity?
Thank you, Supervisor Euler, and Supervisor Holmes.
How about combobulators, any of those?
I think they're probably in the same place.
He actually knows something about auto parts.
I just know movies.
So just to be clear, the staff there is our employees of Rebe's Auto Parts, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have one onsite person that is consistently there from Rebe's that provides both, that manages their internal warehouse, as well as provides the assistance to our staff to do research and finding parts where previously we had staff, internal Placer County staff doing that. Now we're able to outsource that work, and it improves the efficiencies of the garage significantly.
I did business with Rebe's Auto Parts for longer than I wanted to say. And they're just a fantastic, well-run organization, so I think it's really a good, a good move on Placer County's part to go into contract with them. So I will move approval.
Second.
All right, did I open this to the public? Okay, so I'll open it up to the public first and bring it back. So we have a motion by Holmes, second by Wigant. I think he's already read the motion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, nobody opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We move to item 10A, it is the creation of Sustainable Agricultural Groundwater Recharge Program.
Yes, Honorable Board Members, thank you for having me. Brett Story, Department of Public Works, and I can't wait for my questions now. You've woken me up. I wanted to provide a little bit of background to you, because it is a new program, and the genesis of it started several years ago. And that would be the Placer Vineyards Pacific Plan, and it was actually adopted in 2007, so it's been a while, and as Supervisor Gore so eloquently said, stuff's going on now and we've got to get, we've got to get ready for it. So that's, this is one of those programs. And within that development agreement, the developer agreed to pay a fee of a thousand dollars per residential dwelling unit to provide funding for additional recycled water storage and conveyance facilities to assist with the provisions of affordable agricultural water supply. And I'm going to delve into that just a little bit, so you understand why this is so important. And I have worked with the developer, and they are in support of this. And they are paying a number of other mitigation fees and land as well, but this is just focusing on this. And this program not only supports the dollars from this, it supports a lot of our responsibilities, one being the Sustainability Groundwater Management Act, Western Placer Agriculture, which I know is near and dear to this board's heart, the Placer County Conservation Plan, and what's coming, which is called the Regional Water Bank, we'll bring back to your board at another time, which is essentially the ability to store water in the Sacramento region, and there may be the ability for the county to get funds from other people to help put water into the ground, which is ties this whole program together. And those highlighted words that I had put in there were about recycled water and conveyance features. As time has changed, costs have changed, and other elements have changed, and staff had come to the conclusion, for a number of reasons, why those two don't really work well for agricultural water, but we wanted an independent look. And so we hired West Yoast Associates, and Kelly McKinney and Jim Mulligan are here, they actually helped put that program together on some funds from the county, the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and Cal-American Water Company, who is the purveyor of water in the Placer Vineyards. And what the staff, and they ultimately provided us details on, was that it's really economically unviable to do surface water. It's just too far out there. As we know, that land, there's not a lot of development out there, so there's not a lot of water infrastructure that's even headed that way, there aren't a lot of customers in that sense. And so the supply cost of water is also rising, that we've seen in the last couple of years from the PG&E increase in cost to PCWA. And so there's really no method to bring that type of water to agriculture at an economic factor for our farmers. Recycled water supplies are available, and when we looked at the market through Josh, your agricultural commissioner, and the rice farmers, there really is a sensitivity to using recycled water on the sushi rice market, which is one of our largest markets. So we determined, there's plenty of uses for recycled water, we didn't need to use it for this program, so again, we're, bottom line is, we're looking at, to utilize these dollars for groundwater, because that's really the most economical ability for our agriculture to be able to always have water into the ground. Granted, they would have to, if they don't have wells, they could put wells in, but that's far cheaper than the infrastructure that might go out there. And really, we're looking at this for the long term, and that's why we would like to establish this program. We'd establish a special fund that the development fees would be paid into within the CRDA, and we've already worked with their staff on how to do so. The fees of a thousand dollars per residential unit would be collected as the residential building permit for units came in. The expectation over the next decade or so that it could be over ten million dollars, but we may not start seeing the funds for a while yet. And so what we wanted to do was get the program developed, so that when the time comes, we have something to do with those funds that meets the mitigation factors from the CEQA that was performed on the project. Little bit about why groundwater recharge, what you have to do. The program itself, we are enacting through our Groundwater Sustainability Agency and the plan that will be coming to your board before 2021, as registered by the state. Groundwater recharge projects are essential to keeping this basin healthy. So we had already had our geologists look at, where's the area? Generally, it's in the foothill area around Lincoln, Rockland, where the best recharge areas are. It's a combination of the geology and where water flows, and so we're looking at projects, and they've already identified a number of them. There's several ways to do recharge, of which we already do in the county, surface water spreading. You might have seen, where Robert, where you live, sir, there's lots of projects out there where water is spread on different farms that percolates into the ground. There's aqua for storage, the city of Roseville has a couple of these and are about to do many more, where they actually direct recharge water, shoot water into the ground, so that it builds up the table. There's also something called in-lu recharge, which you offset the groundwater pumping by use of surface water. We generally don't do that in our county, that's Sacramento County, but for example, PCWA provides surface water so that someone doesn't pump the groundwater. Again, all charged at keeping it all healthy. The factors that make a good success, you know, are there, is there water available for recharge? Is there capacity in the ground, on the soils and the way it flows? Are there good locations with enough permeability? And then, does that groundwater flow where it's needed to? And so that's the basis of what we would choose projects on. Again, we'd use the funds for capital projects that preserve, maintain, or enhance groundwater supplies. We already have over twenty projects surveyed, and that doesn't mean it's all of them, it means, you know, we had that amount of time and that amount of money to look at those projects. We'll continually be looking at it, and again, as appropriate are located and they meet this performance criteria, we happily include them in. We would like to do a cost-benefit analysis before we do so, so we were ensured that projects we're looking towards are going to work. And this is not meant for you to read, it's just simply one of the projects that's in the report and that talks about, this one is actually Minor's Ravine Detention Facility is already a flood control project. To date, I don't believe it's ever been used, so what we would propose is working with the Flood Control Agency to add on to the facility, so that we could then divert water there and use it to percolate the ground near there, and we could even do it on an annual basis. When there aren't floodwaters that come, we could do it on those other years when there is a healthy water population and there are flows that could be available for that. This is an example of something, we are thinking it's one of our higher priority items that we would go after. The process itself, we did spend some time with the agricultural commissioner and commission. We went a couple of times, they reviewed it, they helped with the approach and the plan, and they unanimously supported the resolution to create. And I attached a letter from the commissioner about what they did. If you approve, the next steps will be to create a budget within our department to fully define the program. Again, before the money comes, we'd like to have the program defined and ready to go. We also would like to begin looking for grant funding to start planning those projects, because of course, there's always a planning phase and then an implementation phase, and we believe that we can use these dollars to match with other dollars. Already spoken with Greg of Placer County Conservation Plan, there's some projects potentially out there, so we could get multiple uses out of the same dollars that might provide several solutions for lots of people, most importantly agricultural. So again, a request would be for you to adopt this resolution, allowing us to create the program and move forward with this thing. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Looks like no questions from the board. Open it to the public. Nobody from the public. I would like to point out Kelly and Jim, who worked for the city of Roseville. Nice to see you partnering with the county on a project like that. And with that, we have, the motion has been read, may I have any other discussion?
Second.
All right, motion by Holmes, second by Wigant, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate the work. Okay, we are moving to item 10B. Yes, okay. County Surface Area 28, Zone of Benefit 55, Lavoti Sewer, rescind sewer user fee increase. Wow, it's not often that we rescind fee increases.
Yes, it's a good moment for us. All right, good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, my name is Jared Deck, I'm the Program Manager for Environmental Engineering. As stated, I will be introducing an ordinance revision and waiving or reading to rescind a sewer user fee. County Surface Area 28, Zone of Benefit 55, Lavoti Sewer, is located in South Placer, serving two hundred and forty-one equivalent dwelling units. The majority of the wastewater is conveyed to Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District for treatment. On May 9, 2017, your board adopted increases to sewer user fees in an amount of four dollars per month over a five-year period, as a direct pass-through of the projected increases from Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. However, on May 22, 2019, the board directors revised sewer rates to forego these increases. Therefore, staff is proposing to rescind the approved increases on May 9, 2017, for fiscal years 2021 and 2122, and amend section 13.12.350H of Placer County Code to reflect these changes. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
All right. I do not see any questions. We'll open it to the public, and we'll bring it back, and what's the rule of the board? Reducing fees, come on, somebody.
Move approval.
Supervisor Wigant, second by Supervisor Holmes, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you very much. And then we move to item 10C, and, item C?
Yeah.
Is that you as well?
All right.
This is the intention to set a public hearing, annexation of Aldia property into Sewer Maintenance District One in Auburn.
Honorable Board Members, once again, my name is Jared Deck, Program Manager for Environmental Engineering. I'm here to request the adoption of a resolution of intention to set the time and date for a public hearing to consider annexation of the Aldia property into Sewer Maintenance District One. The requested parcel, APN 076-331-010, consists of a 1.36 acre lot located on Florence Ave in Auburn. This lot is consistent with the Placer County General Plan, residential, single-family, and combining agriculture. The current annexation fee in Sewer Maintenance District One for the property will be six thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Staff support this request. In order to move forward, request that your board approve the adoption of a resolution of intention, set the time and date for a public hearing to consider annexation of the Aldia property into Sewer District Maintenance One. So if there's any questions, I can answer those.
All right, no questions, but I'll have the clerk read in the time and date for the proposed hearing.
For this item, the board is being asked to adopt a resolution of intention and set the time and date for the public hearing at 9:00 AM or soon thereafter on Tuesday, March 24, 2020, to consider annexation of the Alida property located at 12855 Florence Lane in Auburn area, APN 076-331-010-000, into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District One, Auburn, and provide sewer services.
All right, and do I need to open this up to the public? I do. All right, bring it back. All right, we have a motion, and somebody make a motion, please. Supervisor Holmes and Supervisor Wigant, second. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? All right, motion carries. And we'll have you look at item 10D, which is the intention to set a public hearing annexation of the Cabral Ranch property into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek.
All right, for the last time here, Jared Deck, Program Manager for Environmental Engineering. So as stated, I'm here to request the adoption of the resolution of intention to set the time and date for a public hearing to consider annexation of Cabral Ranch property into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek. Requested parcel, APN 023-240-079, consists of 12.5 acre lot located west of Cook Riolo Road, south of Vineyard Road, and Dry Creek area. Parcel has a proposed 12-lot residential plan development, which aligns with the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan zoning. The current annexation fee for reimbursement to the CFD One program is two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars per EDU. The proposed development would total thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Staff supports this request. In order to move forward, request that your board approve the adoption of a resolution of intention, set the time and date for a public hearing to consider annexation of the Cabral Ranch property into County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek. If you have any questions, I can address those.
All right, no questions, any comments from the public? And we'll bring it back to the clerk to help set the date and time of the hearing.
Adopt a resolution of intention to set the time and date to hold a public hearing at 9:00 AM or soon thereafter. or soon thereafter on Tuesday, March 24th, 2020 to consider annexation of the Cabral Ranch property located west of Cook Riola Road and south of Vineyard Road in the Dry Creek area, APN 023-240-079-000 into the boundaries of County Service Area 28, Zone of Benefit 173, Dry Creek to provide sewer services.
All right. All right, motion by Holmes, second by Weigant. Well, let's do this, let's, we have the motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye? And opposed? Now, go ahead Supervisor Gustafson.
I just had a question that I didn't think was appropriate in the four items proceeding, which was what time of year do you take?
The photo and how did you get down safely from that location?
Beautiful photo.
Thank you, I definitely appreciate that. It was in March, actually, so we'd go out there, cross-country ski out. The only way to get out there is on an 11-mile cross-country ski out.
Wow.
And 11 miles back after that.
Wow.
But we got very lucky and hit a snowstorm while we're out there and overnight and woke up in the morning to that, so.
Beautiful, that's a great photo. Thank you.
So hopefully we had that snow this year.
Yeah, a miracle march is what we need. We definitely need that. All right, and we are moving now on to item 11A, New Classification of Conservation Program Biologist. Good morning, Still Kate.
Still, good morning. Thank you Madam Chair and members of the Board. Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. I'm here this morning to introduce an ordinance amending your schedule of classifications and compensation ordinance and the allocation of positions ordinance to reflect the creation of a new classification of Conservation Program Biologist. This position will support the Placer County Conservation Plan, or PCCP, with an expertise in wildlife biology and natural resources management. Duties will include conducting fieldwork in wetland and wildlife habitats, maintaining habitat restoration management plans, and monitoring the status of species and habitats in support of the PCCP's goals. Your Civil Service Commission approved this classification at its February 10th, 2020 meeting and recommended a rate of pay commensurate with the labor market and internal equity. One Conservation Program Biologist is proposed for addition to the Community Development Resource Agency's allocations. However, the department budget already contains sufficient funds to fill the position this fiscal year. I'm available for any questions, as is Greg McKenzie from the PCCP program.
Thank you Kate. Looks like there are no questions. I'll open it to the public and bring it back. And may I have a motion? Motion Weigant, second. Mueller, all those in favor? Aye? Any opposition? Motion carries. Great, thank you. And next we'll move into closed session and we'll have our County Council.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to consider one item of public employment, that is the District Attorney, to review qualified applications and provide direction on the interview process.
Great, thank you very much.
The Board met in closed session to consider one item, public employment, District Attorney. The Board reviewed all applications submitted. The Board then directed HR staff to schedule interviews in closed session for the week of the 24th and to notify those applicants who are not successful in reaching the interview process. The Board also directed that interview questions be brought back to the Board for consideration during closed session on March 10th. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Great, thank you very much. If I'm on. And with that, we will adjourn to our next meeting on March 9th. Special meeting on March 9th, here at what, 9:00 AM?
Yep.
All right, thank you everyone, we're adjourned.